Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Milpitas Planning Commission Meeting. June 26th, it's 7 o'clock. I'm calling the meeting to order. Let me read the public comment instructions. Oral public comments may only be provided live during the Planning Commission Meeting in person. All comments provided shall be limited to three minutes or less as determined by the Chair. All members of the public will be limited to one comment per agenda item and one comment for non-agenda items. Members of the public may submit written comments by email to planningdepartment@milpitas.gov. This time, I'd like to request Vice Chair for the Pledge of Allegiance, everybody stand please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Ms. Medina, roll call please.
Thank you, Chair. I will begin taking attendance, starting with Commissioner Kong.
I'm here.
Commissioner Colkins is absent this evening. Commissioner Gupta?
I'm here.
Commissioner Owasty is absent this evening. Commissioner Galong?
Present.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby?
Present.
And Chair Albana?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. For our next item, may I request Attorney Cridge to read our Conflict of Interest Declaration?
Thank you, Chair. I ask the Chair and every other member of the Commission, whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest, relate to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Roll call please, Liz.
Commissioner Kong?
None.
Commissioner Gupta?
None.
Commissioner Galong?
None.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby?
None.
Chair Albana?
None.
Thank you. Let the record reflect no report financial or personal conflicts. I further ask the Chair and every other member of the Commission to please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received within the last 12 months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda or contributions received from any development project applicant for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Ms. Liz?
Commissioner Kong?
None.
Commissioner Gupta?
None.
Commissioner Galong?
None.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby?
None.
Chair?
None.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Let the record reflect no word conflicts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Cridge. For our next agenda, we will have to approve our agenda for this evening. Do I have any motion to approve today's agenda?
Move to approve the meeting minutes for... Sorry, move to approve the meeting agenda for June 26th, 2024.
Thank you, Commissioner Galong. Any second? A second. Second, Vice Chair Medina Ashby, thank you. Now, we will go for the approval of our last minute meeting for May 22nd. Oh, we have to vote, sorry. Roll call, vote please.
Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Galong?
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Chair Albana?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Now, we'll approve the past minutes of May 22nd. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve?
Thank you, Commissioner Gupta. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Galong. Thank you.
Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Galong?
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Chair Albana?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Our next item? Item number seven in our agenda tonight is announcements. Any announcements? Planning Commissioners or Planning Director? Any announcements?
There are no announcements from the Planning Commission. I do have...
Yes, Planning Director, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Albana. Our July break, our annual July break, is upcoming. So, we will not have any Planning Commission Meetings in July. The next Planning Commission Meeting will take place on the second Wednesday of August, August 14th. Just wanted to remind everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, if I may, an announcement? Just a reminder, the stay of the city is tomorrow, the address, at 5:30 in these chambers.
Everybody's invited, right?
Yes, it is. Open to the public.
Open to the public. Thank you so much, Attorney Cridge. So, our next item, item number eight, Public Forum. Let me read the Declaration again. Members of the public are invited to speak on any item that does not appear on today's agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes or less at the Chair's discretion. When called to speak, you are encouraged to state your name for the record. As an item not listed on the agenda, no action can be taken. However, the Planning Commission may instruct the staff to place the item on a future meeting agenda. May I invite any members of the public? Are there any comments, Liz? Do we have any online and how many have submitted?
I don't have any speaker cards for the public forum. Chair, I received one speaker card from Mr. Oswaldo Escuera.
Yes, go ahead and speak in the microphone.
He's on, yeah. Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. My name is Oswaldo Segueda. I'm from the Carpenter Union 405, representing Santa Clara County and also including Milpita City. So, I come here as a carpenter deeply invested in our community's well-being and employer your priorities, policies that ensures the level of wage, state-certified apprenticeship programs, healthcare access, and the local hiring practices. Additionally, I urge you to implement the factors into upcoming developments. A level of wages is fundamental for workers like myself to support our families and tribe. By establishing fair wages standards so you can alleviate financial strain and bolster economic stability within our community. State-certified apprenticeship programs are crucial for nurturing the next generation of skilled carpenters. By investing in those initiatives, we can provide essential training and career pathways ensuring a skilled workforce for years to come. Access to healthcare is no illusory for a basic human right. Workers deserve quality healthcare to safeguard their well-being and productivity. For comprehensive healthcare coverage will support the health and productivity for carpenters and their families. Prioritizing local hiring practices in our community by reinvesting in local talent and businesses. By favoring local hires, we can foster economic growth and create more inclusive workforce reflected in our city's diversity. And I urge you to champion these policies from a carpenter's perspective and integrate them into an entitlement process for developers. Together, we can build stronger, more equitable for the community for all. And thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Oswaldo. Is there anybody else in the public or any comment? There's no more. So, at this time, they're having nobody else to comment. I move for the public forum to be closed.
I make a motion to close the public forum.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
A second?
Second by Commissioner Kong. Thank you.
Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta? Commissioner Galong?
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby?
Aye.
And Chair Albana?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item, number nine, Public Hearing. We will have four items tonight. So, our first item, nine does one, alcohol sales at 777 East Capitol Avenue. Welcome. Good evening, Planner, Mr. Michael Fassadi. We see again each other.
Good evening, Chair Albana. Good evening, Commission Director Lee and the rest of our planning staff. I'm Michael Fassadi, Senior Planner here with the City of Milpitas. And we'll be presenting an item to you for a conditional use permit. Next slide, please. The city received an application from Lee's Supermarket at 777 East Capitol Avenue to be permitted to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-site consumption. It should be noted to the Planning Commission that Lee's Supermarket, which is currently going through attendant improvements to open the store, is allowed to operate the grocery store itself without Planning Commission approval. This application is strictly to allow Lee's Supermarket to sell alcohol. If approved, Lee's Supermarket will work with both the City of Milpitas and the State of California Alcohol Beverage Control, also known as ABC, to obtain what is referred to as a Type 21 liquor license. The Conditional Use Permit, or CUP, is the first step in the process to obtain that license. Next slide, please. The project location is in the southern, most southern part of the city of Milpitas. It's outlined in yellow on the map front of you. And it's east of Capitol Avenue. Next slide, please. This map demonstrates the project site zoning designation. The building is located in the metro Milpita-specific plan area, but the site is located in both the City of Milpitas and City of San Jose border. To the north of the site, it's surrounded by R3 TODs, a multifamily residential zoning district. And the 1.2-acre site complements both the high-density residential that surrounds it because it provides nearby residents goods and services without a long commute to get there. Next slide, please. This is a picture and example of a grocery store similar to Lee's Supermarket, selling alcohol for off-site consumption, so you're clear what its entitlement is for. Next slide, please. According to the floor plan, beer and wine that will be sold by the store that needs to be refrigerated will be located in the coolers to the rear of the market. Distilled spirits would be sold at the front of the store, behind a counter where greater control measures can be used. Next slide, please. I'm a big fan of pictures, which is why I add them to the slide presentation. And this is an example of refrigerated beer and wine sales typical of any standard grocery store. Next slide, please. And this is an example of distilled spirits for sale. With distilled spirits, a customer would need to have an employee provide them the alcohol instead of a direct self-service. Next slide, please. In conditional use permit situations like this, the city has two main departments that review such applications, that being the Planning Department and Police Department. So, planning reviews the application to conform that the proposed business use is allowed in that particular zoning district. That zoning district is C2. It's a commercial zoning district, which allows commercial services such as grocery store and sale of goods and services. But Milpita, and we rely on Milpita's Police Department to review the application to determine if the proposed business use would significantly create a negative impact to the community. If both planning and the police department believe the proposed use is consistent with the goals and policies of the city, we'll both recommend approval to the decision-makers, that being the Planning Commission. The Police Department provided planning with a memo outlining the recommendations to provide safe alcohol sales service. This memo has been attached as attachment C in your document or in your planning file. The planning department takes the recommendations that the police department have, and we discuss the recommendations with the applicant to make sure that they kind of agree with those recommendations. And we add those recommendations as conditions of approval. Once we have a complete application and a recommendation, we have agreement from the applicant themselves. We notice the meeting, and then we become presented to the Planning Commission, which all those steps have been taken. Next slide, please. We further notice the project, and a notice for this project has been placed through a number of different media venues. We publish the notice of the application, the Milpita's posts. We place a sign in front of the property. We take 1,000 linear foot radius of the property to notify residents and owners, which was approximately over 1,600 postcards that were sent. And as of 7:16 PM, the city hasn't received any comments on this application. Next slide, please. So, in order to recommend approval for this application, we have findings within the zoning ordinance specific for a conditional use permit. But since this project location is within an over-concentrated area within the census tract, planning staff makes an additional finding for Section 23958.4 as stated in the California Business and Professional Code. Next slide, please. And if I can kind of go and just explain that finding and what is required. That's what I'm going to do right now. So, ABC addresses over-concentration through what is referred to as a "public convenience and necessity", also known as a PCN letter. The Public Convenience and Necessity Standard is a rule that government officials use to decide whether they should allow a certain request or project. Each county in California is allotted a specific number of off-sale licenses, identified by the census tract and determined based on the population. In this census tract that Lee's Supermarket is located, a maximum of two licenses are allowed before a PCN letter is needed. Currently, in this census tract, there's three licenses available. Therefore, by approving this CUP, the total number of licenses of off-sale licenses in the census tract will be three. Cities use the conditional use permit process to determine if the proposed license would be considered a "public convenience and necessity". As you see in the staff report, the findings speak to the public convenience and necessity for the residents in the community to allow this license to be approved. Next slide, please. Since the application is considered a project per SEQA, planning staff must also determine if SEQA California Environmental Quality Act applies. Project is considered exempt per SEQA per two sections of the California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15301, in that the proposed use is within an existing facility in Section 15183, and that the project of commercial uses is consistent with the general plan and zoning. Next slide, please. In closing, staff recommends the Planning Commission open the public hearing to receive comments, move to close the public hearing, consider the exemptions in accordance to SEQA, and adopt Resolution Number 24-019, recommending approval for the conditional use permit. This concludes staff summary of the proposed project. I'd like to introduce Todd Lee, who represents Ms. Jenny Trung and her husband Alan, the owners of 777 Investment, the owners of Lee's Supermarket. Also, if the Planning Commission does have questions from Milpita's Police Department, I believe we have Lieutenant Sanchez available virtually for any questions. I have to share that he's on duty this evening, so he's kind of helping us out. But it's my understanding he is available virtually. Once the applicant presents themselves, both the applicant and staff will be here to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you for that presentation. Is there somebody else who's going to speak? The applicant?
Yes, Mr. Todd Lee is a representative of...
Thank you, Michael. Good evening. My name is Todd Lee. I'm with Pacific General Construction. I'm the project lead for Lee's Supermarket, and I'm responsible for overseeing the coordination of the designs, the permits, and ultimately, the construction. Just wanted to take a moment to answer any questions you may have and to express our gratitude and thanks on behalf of Lee's Supermarket, which is a family-owned business, to the City of Milpitas for their support, and especially to Michael Fassadi, Jay, Bill Tott, Building Department, and Alex Andrade from Economic Development Committee. Those individuals have been very instrumental in supporting this project and happy to say that we're in full swing under construction now and look forward to bringing this supermarket to the community, hopefully, before the holidays. Any question?
Well, thank you so much for even considering Milpitas. And also, I'm sure the staff and even everybody had put so much work into studying this. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Galong?
Yes. Are you Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Yeah. I know Lee Sandwich is very familiar to me. So, you own the Lee Sandwich also store?
Not myself, although my last name is Lee.
So, is this your first store, supermarket, Lee's Supermarket in the area?
This will be the second South Bay location for the Lee's Supermarket. Not the first Lee's Sandwiches location. There's one already here in the City of Milpitas. But this new supermarket inside the market, you know, one of the departments includes the Lee's Sandwich.
Where's your first supermarket? Where's that?
In San Jose.
For how long?
We built that approximately seven, eight years ago.
Do you have beer and wine?
They do, yes.
When did you open in Milpitas?
The Lee Sandwiches business in Milpitas?
Yes.
I would have to check. I'm not sure when the family had opened that. I know it's been quite a while. Maybe... This is Jenny.
Jenny. The original Lee Sandwich we opened was 20 years ago, right on Calabasas Boulevard, right here. And that's just a Lee Sandwich. So, now, five years or six years ago, we opened the Lee's Supermarket with Lee Sandwich inside.
So, there's your sandwiches inside, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's groceries and...
Grocery and Lee Sandwich.
And Lee Sandwich together.
So, why is this your first time you apply for the permit to sell beer and wine? This is your first time?
No, the San Jose store also sells...
Beer and wine, yes, yes.
Beer and wine.
That's in San Jose. This one is in Milpitas, for a second location.
So, how...
Excuse me, so Commissioner Galong, I think we should also just have questions directed to the warehouse that they're going to establish here.
Yeah, I have a question, Michael.
Okay, all right, thank you, Michael.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Michael, there is a Stratford in Great Mall, Stratford School, is that still existing?
I think that's going to be that port item.
No, no, no. I'm saying that there's a school nearby, near to your, in this project, right?
There's a school approximately a quarter to a half mile northbound of this project site.
How many hours is this?
I'm guessing approximately a half mile from the intersection of Montague Expressway and Capitol. The Stratford School is on the corner over by Great Mall.
Yes, that's right. Okay. Okay, I think, what's the hours of operation or selling the alcohol? Up to what time?
I put that in the staff report. The grocery store will operate from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM daily.
Selling beer and wine up till what time?
They'd be selling beer, wine, and spirits between 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
8:00 PM, okay. Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Galong. I have one quick question. With regards to the display, it says here that you will have shelves, but somebody will be manning it, correct?
Correct, correct. So, if someone wanted to purchase alcohol, a distilled spirit, they would have to have an employee. They may not be there at that moment, but the cashier will have to go.
Like the usual code where, you know, they'll check on their ages and everything. I don't know if I misread. It said something like... The store will be open from what time? 8:00 in the morning to...
8:00 PM in the evening?
To 8:00 PM.
That's the plan, yes.
I see. I think I read what is this. Sales of alcoholic beverage shall not... Shall only occur between the hours of 6:00 AM and 2:00 AM? Where did that come from?
So, the state of California only allows alcohol sales. The state of California regulates alcohol sales between 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM. I just literally took that state. If a store is only open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM?
To 8:00 PM, correct. Just wanted to confirm. All right, thank you.
That's a very good question.
Any other questions? Yes. Commissioner Kong?
Yeah, I do. So, I have several questions. The first one is that you mentioned over-concentration of licenses, and there are currently three licenses, right, in this tract?
To the census tract, yes.
Yeah, so with this addition, it will still be three, is that correct? Because it's replacing Mekong that had the license prior to it?
That's correct.
So, we're not actually adding any new establishments with license? Because essentially, it's just a replacement, right, between Mekong and Lee?
That's correct.
So, the second question is, with Mekong, how was the floor plan or the layout of the wine and spirit? Was it similar whereby when Mekong was operating the supermarket, did they also had the distinction of refrigerated here and wine at the back and distilled spirits in front? Do you have that knowledge?
I don't, Commissioner Kong, if I can share why. Prior to the late 1990s, businesses that sold alcohol did not require city approval. They only required ABC approval. Mekong operated in Lucky Seven even prior to that, well before this law that allowed local jurisdictions to regulate... Mekong operated in Lucky Seven even prior to that, well before this law that allowed local jurisdictions to regulate alcohol sales. Therefore, we didn't have a file that showed that information. I could tell you, walking into the store, that I've been a member of the San Jose community, North San Jose community for a number of years. I do remember seeing the coolers in the rear, and I just didn't buy any alcohol there.
Okay, all right, that's fair. And then the last question I have is because this property is crossing the border of Milpitas and San Jose, what is the plan response if there is any incident? When they call nine one one, does it go to Milpitas or does it go to San Jose? Or, you know, how is police department going to respond to this site?
Thank you, that, that is a great question. If, if we maybe will ask Lieutenant Sanchez on that? Secretary Medina?
Lieutenant Sanchez?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, so Mekong Market or Triple Seven Capital, that is actually our jurisdiction. Anytime there's a call for service, Milpitas Police Officers do respond there.
If I can share a little bit more, the building itself, the, the city limit line doesn't go through the building, it actually goes through the parking lot. So as Lieutenant Sanchez said, a hundred percent of that use will be monitored by Milpitas Police Department.
Got it, thank you. That's all.
I have something. Michael, can you just kind of clarify on that map two, map number two? On the configuration of the lot on the project site? You have the red one, and the, the yellow goes out. Is that another street, an exit street?
Can we bring that on the slide up so everyone can see?
Map two zoning map?
While we're doing that, I can answer your question. Actually, no, the, that yellow line is the, the property itself. The reason why that yellow line goes into the white area is because that's city of San Jose jurisdiction. So that, hence, that's why we were stating that, that, that property is literally on the border of the city of Milpitas and the city of San Jose. The colors we have represent our zoning map because it's city of Milpitas zoning map. We don't use those colors in San Jose, but ironically, their property splits between the two.
But there's an access?
There is.
They have an access out to Trimble Road?
Correct, and if we can go to the slide previous. Thank you. And it is, I was highlighted for clarification that you can see, it's, not only is it, it's not just an access, it's approximately sixty parking spaces.
That's for the parking?
A portion of the parking, the majority of the parking is in front of the site facing East Capitol Avenue. But yes, it also includes parking.
I see, I see. All right, that's all. Thank you so much. Any other comments from the commissioners? I can open the public for public hearing? No other comments? So this is for the approval for the conditional use permit and any other exemptions?
No, a conditional use.
Just conditional use permit.
And just for, again, just for clarity, this is for off sale general is what they call the license.
The license.
It is, it's similar to Safeway, it's, there's no drinking establishment at the grocery store. They're there to purchase retail alcohol and take it home.
Okay, so at this time, I can open the public comment, any public comments?
Chair, I do not have any speaker cards for this item.
We don't, okay. So with that, can I have a motion to close the public comment?
I'll make the motion to close public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Kong. Second from?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Gupta.
Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Galan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby?
Aye.
And Chair Albana?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any, any comments, any deliberations, or anybody wants to make a motion?
Yes, question to Michael.
Yeah, you can go ahead and make.
Quick question, Michael. How about people buy, when they buy, after they bought this beer, can they drink at the parking, parking lot? Do you have, how do you monitor? Because some people they can buy and drink in the car in the parking lot. Do you have a camera that can monitor these people? Anyone can, you know, some, some teenager like eighteen, nineteen years old, twenty, they can buy the beer and drink at the parking lot? Do you have a, this store has a camera that can monitor?
Yes, there's a numerous controls in the, in the resolution. Video surveillance is one of them. That, that's why the police department and Attachment C had recommended these, these controls that the applicant has agreed upon, which includes video surveillance. If Commissioner Galan, if someone were to illegally just open up an alcoholic beverage out inside their car, Lee's supermarket, a representative would probably contact the Milpitas Police Department to, to deal with that issue. There's no way we can physically control that, but we can't physically control that for any business. So we just ask that these conditions be added to make sure that there's surveillance all throughout the property, including the parking lot areas.
Thank you.
Commissioner Galan, do I have a motion then to?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number two four dash zero one nine, recommending the planning commission approve the conditional use permit subject to the findings and condition of approval.
We have a motion from Commissioner Galan, second from?
I'll second the motion.
From Commissioner Kong, thank you.
Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Galan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby?
Aye.
And Chair Albana?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. So for our next item, we have item two, nine two Contractors Yard at eight nine seven Ames Avenue. And our planner, still Michael Fassati?
Thank you, Chair Albana. Good, good evening again, Commissioners, Director Lee and fellow staff. I'm Michael Fassati, Senior Planner here with the city of Milpitas, and I'd like to direct your attention to the proposed Contractors Yard. Next slide, please. This application is for, also for a conditional use permit, also known as a CUP. This also includes what they refer to as a minor site development permit to allow the operation of a contractors yard at eight nine seven Ames Avenue. The applicant is Landmark Control Services, also known as LCS. LCS is a general contractor that specializes in cemetery maintenance and development. I've included the logo for Escape Camper Vans since the planning commission had reviewed their conditional use permit application approximately a year ago, prior to you, Commissioner Kong, and I think prior to you, Commissioner Gupta. It's the same site, the, this proposal, if we can go to the next slide, please. As you can see on the plan set, and the LCS is a little gray, but the, the, the site itself hosts two buildings. The Escape Camper Vans is currently in operation in the front of the lot, and LCS would be located in the, the rear of the lot. LCS would be buffered by, from Ames Avenue with, from the, with the Escape Camper Vans building. Next slide, please. This map demonstrates the project site's zoning designation. LCS is completely surrounded with heavy industrial uses, with the exception of that green stripe. That's Piedmont Creek, let you know. But there's that whole site in, almost a mile throughout is industrial uses throughout the city of Milpitas. Next slide, please. This is the existing building that LCS would occupy, and a conditional use permit is required for a contractors yard because contractors' yards may have a negative impact on surrounding areas, such as increased traffic, noise from equipment, and visual aesthetics. The CUP process allows the city to assess the potential impacts and impose conditions to mitigate any negative effects. This is the picture of the existing building where the contractors yard would operate. Next slide, please. This is an example of the site plan, which also includes eight ninety three Ames Avenue, which is not a part of this application. Both these buildings are on the same parcel, which is allowed. Next slide, please. Here is the floor plan of the proposed building. The warehouse interior would remain relatively unchanged, with the exception of minor improvements, upgrades in office and bathroom modifications. These changes that are being proposed will require a building permit, but the applicant is waiting for planning commission approval before they pursue the building permit process. The warehouse will be used to store product and has the size to store vehicles and equipment if needed. The warehouse itself is approximately seven thousand one hundred seventy-five square feet. This location and this business would use this, or this business would use this location as the hub for their business, where employees, equipment, and approximately three to five administrative office staff can maintain administrative operations. The particular, this particular business of a general contractor for cemetery development would use the yard to store equipment and vehicles, but since the bulk of their work is in cemetery development, their vehicles, their work vehicles are typically stored on the work site themselves. The typical hours of operation are from eight, six AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday. Next slide, please. If approved, the applicant would repaint the existing building. Because they're proposing repainting, it requires an additional minor site development permit. The bulk of the MSD permit is to completely repaint the building, either a sterling silver gray for the main body and black iron, black for the doors, and the proposed equipment enclosure. The MSD permit also includes cleaning up the parking lot and repainting the parking spaces if needed. The parking lot was previously painted some time ago, so the re-striping will only be necessary to delineate the parking spaces the city has accounted. Next slide, please. The following table demonstrates the project meets all the standard, required standards for the city, and also the building department, fire prevention department, and police department have reviewed the project and determined the operation can function while meeting all city requirements. Next slide, please. Similar to the previous conditional use permit you opined on, the city published the notice within the Milpitas post and placed a sign in front of the property. The city also sent out notices to property owners within a thousand feet. We had, because the lots are so much bigger, there was only approximately two hundred seventeen postcards that were sent, and similar to the previous conditional use permit, no comments have been received. Next slide, please. The city analyzes projects to see if the findings within the zoning ordinance specific for a conditional use permit and minor site development permit can be made. In your staff report, there are findings that are different for each permit. Yet, in summary, the city's found approving the CUP for a contractors yard at eight nine seven Ames Avenue is appropriate because the use is appropriate to the industrial area. It does not conflict with existing uses in the mediate area, can be managed responsibly to minimize any negative impacts on the surrounding community and development and environment. Next slide, please. This project is considered a project per SEQA, and the additional, the same exemptions that were for the previous CUP are being used for fifteen, we're using section fifteen three oh one, that the project is considered exempt because the proposed use is within an existing building. No additional floor areas being added, and it's just an existing facility. Also, section one five one eight three, and that the project is a commercial use in an industrial building, and repainting an existing building is consistent with the general plan and zoning, especially since it's an industrial use in an industrial zoned area. Next slide, please. In closing, staff recommends the planning commission open a public hearing to receive comments, close the public hearing, consider the exemptions for SEQA, and adopt resolution twenty four dash zero two four, recommending approval for the conditional use permit and minor site development permit. This includes staff summary of the project. I'd like to introduce Mr. David Penny, the owner of LCS. He also, the property owners Cheryl Pearson and Karen Tally are available virtually if there's any questions specifically for the property. Once the applicant presents themselves, both the applicant and staff will be here to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael. Would you have any special comment?
No, I just, thank you, Planning Commission, for, for hearing our proposal. We're excited to hopefully relocate to your city and be part of Milpitas community. It's a upgrade for us. We're a growing, rapidly growing company. We're pretty unique. We service all the cemeteries from pretty much all over the nation, but we cover all of California, and it's kind of a little niche thing we found years ago, and it's rapidly expanding. This is going to be a big step in helping our operations and helping to serve our clients better, so. Yeah, anything, questions for me? But yeah, it's a standard contractors yard, but most of our stuff does, we, we work from here to San Diego, so a lot of our stuff just moves around. It's just, this is a kind of place for organization or kind of produce and reorganize as we kind of go in between jobs and stuff like that. So a lot of our employees take their stuff home, but yeah, there's not, most of that stuff is just an organization collective that is putting every stuff in one spot. We're currently located in two facilities. It allows us to combine into one.
Oh, when approved, of course, we're excited for you for LCS, David, so. You have another one in San Jose, right?
I have two in San Jose.
You have two in San Jose. So this will be your third.
Well, yeah, we'll combine those two facilities in San Jose, and then we're getting a larger yard for our larger. Kind of, this gets all our smaller stuff and located, and we do a lot of North Bay and Sacramento work, so for our employees, this is, this is kind of a, puts a center over the bay. It's a really good location to serve our San Francisco locations. So it just makes a lot of sense, size wise.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Or David? Or Michael?
I have a question for the, for planner. This application was made, if I read the, the document on April twenty fourth this year, which is about sixty days. So how did you manage to get this project through in sixty days? Normally it takes a lot longer. So congratulations.
No, no, thank you, Commissioner Gupta, for that. It, it was a combination of just efficiently working, working with Director Lee on the project. The, as you can see, the, the staff report is, is relatively sparse. There wasn't much that was required to process the application, and the, the planning department really tries to process applications as soon as possible. I know you see applications that take a year and a half to two years. One thing that helped with this application is the applicant is also a designer. So a lot of the exhibits and materials we do need, he was able to provide expediently. The second thing that helped is the applicant being a general contractor, he understood the building permit requirements, the fire prevention requirements, and I think that helped in his best interest. The biggest way of approving or getting this to planning commission was the simple fact that it's an industrial use, an industrial area. You know, I, I commend the planning commission because you're asked to make a lot of decisions on projects that fall into these other areas, but there's a lot of tweaks to them. This was kind of, the industrial area is made for industrial uses, this is industrial use, so we definitely, we try to meet the applicant halfway and do whatever we can to process it in an expedient amount of time. I don't want to belabor, but that's how I got it here to April twenty sixth. Hence, we do want to thank the planning commission because we, we try to make every effort to respect your time. We try to put three projects on. If it was up to the applicants, we'd have ten applications in front of you today, so, you know, I, I commend Director Lee. We, we have four on it today. Hopefully, these two, we can kind of get approved and move forward with the others. So that's a little more of a long winded answer. I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gupta. Yes, we, we, we are aware how everybody's trying to, thank you for the staff and planning director. They've been trying, they're, they're on top of it. They try to do a lot so that we just don't see it. But with all the paperwork we have to read, we don't know, like, we're not there in the office eight hours to review it, right? So we ask clarification so that the people listening can also be clarified about it. But I had a quick question. But I had a quick question, um, with regards to the vehicles coming in and out, approximately how many vehicles will be? Because it'll be eight o'clock to six o'clock A M. To six P M. Approximately what would be the traffic, the in and out of vehicles coming out from there?
Um, if it's okay.
Based on like some traffic, you know? That's good. Thank you. Thank you for that information, David. And how large are the vehicles? About how big would be these vehicles? Just ordinary trucks or? Good to know. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Mr. Kong?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I have a question regarding the color choices. Um, I mean, the city does require a neutral color palette and the existing colors. It does look, you know, appealing, the bright white. Is there any reason to change the colors to a much darker, you know, choice?
I wish, David, you can speak in a microphone so the public can hear. I'm sorry. It would be best. Thank you.
It, just really trying to give the building a little bit of a refresh. That's the original stripe and, you know, we're, we're redoing the awning and just to a more of an aluminum product. And it's just trying to give it a little bit more of a modern.
Okay, all right. It's just perhaps like you said, right? The color doesn't really show up nicely here just because it does look dark.
Yeah.
Almost the same as the elsewhere on the ground.
Now, it, there'll be a contrast of the asphalt and making sure you little, it'll look, the, I could do a better rendering if you'd like. But yeah, it's, it'll, it's going to be a very aesthetically pleasing building.
All right. Great. Thank you. And I have one more question is regarding offsite employees. You did mention that you have up to like forty-five employees that are offsite. At any given time, do you see all of them coming to this site at the same time? Do we have enough parking to accommodate everyone when you have special events?
Yeah, no, rarely happens. I mean, that is so a lot of our site meetings are done because people live all over. So we, like I said, we cover all of California. I've got jobs going Louisiana. So that very rarely happens and a lot of times we'll figure our company year end stuff is usually done off sites or else for like a big dinner or gathering. That's about the only time we all get together in one spot. A lot of stuff somewhere we only have an office in Oregon, so very rarely is everyone together on one site. And if it's something where our best chance for that is when we're all on a, a large site where we're combining five or six multiple crews and we'll take those chances to be able to gather everybody.
Okay. Uh, and then lastly, um, you mentioned that the perimeter will be fenced up, right? And there will be gate to access this property. All right. Is the gate going to be always open during the hours of operation and close?
Yeah, so there'll be also a man gate. That's a public access man gate that we're adding as part of the proposal.
Sorry, I didn't catch your last part.
There'll be a, also a public access man gate as part of proposal.
Okay.
Plus the, the main gate. So there will always be public access to whether the gates open or close. There will always be a man gate that's accessible to the public.
All right, got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, follow up to my question then, at least it's, uh, being recorded. Uh, we talked about the vehicles, how many, uh, coming in and out within a day? But what would be the, the weight of this, uh, big trucks?
Uh, you know, some of our water trucks are fifteen thousand pounds, probably G B R. You know, our, our five fifty dumps trucks are around twelve thousand G B R.
And about ten trucks.
Well, they just, we've got a mix of vehicles. We, you know, on any one day, some of our crews could be on, you know, we probably could be on seven different sites. So we're just rapidly moving. So really this is a page, not so much a storage, but kind of come back, reload, get stuff for next job, load up and leave. So I would say at any one time, there might be ten trucks parked there. But a lot of, a lot of drivers take trucks home based on where they live. So it's just a, it's hard to say at any one day, but there, I would say ten to twelve vehicles, maybe max.
Thank you, David. Any other question? Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Maybe we should open now any, uh, for public, uh, comments? There anybody with this project?
Chair, there are no speaker cards for this item. Yeah.
So there having no other, uh, public comments on this particular item. Um, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Kong. Stand by. Please.
A second.
Yeah, thank you, Com- Commissioner Galang, second, right? Oh, no, Gupta, Commissioner Gupta, second.
Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Galang?
Aye.
Uh, Vice Chair Medina Ashby?
Aye.
And Chair Albana?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item, item number nine, three would be the new pad build. Oh, I need to have a motion to approve. Motion to approve item number ten-two, please.
Okay, I make a motion. I make a motion to approve, um, resolution number twenty-four dash zero two four, recommending the planning commission prove a conditional use permit and minor site development permit subject to the findings and conditions of approval.
I second. Motion by Commissioner Gupta and second by Vice Chair. Uh, roll.
Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Galang?
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby?
Aye.
And Chair Albana?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank. So now our next item, item number nine, three, the new pad building at one, two, five North Milpitas Boulevard. It's going to be presented by our planning commissioner Christina Fang.
Hi, um, planning commission, associate planner Christina Fang is joining virtually to deliver the presentation.
Thank you, Director Lee, and good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, fellow staff, and members of the public. As noted, we will discussing a new pad building with a drive-through at one twenty-five North Milpitas Boulevard. Next slide, please. The application is for a number of different entitlements. That includes a site development permits, conditional use permits, site development permit amendments and minor site development permits to develop a new six thousand two hundred, two hundred and forty-five square foot commercial pad building within the existing Bercher Square North Shopping Center with up to three retail tenants and a drive-through for one of the tenants. A replacement monument sign at the intersection of North Milpitas Boulevard and East Calaveras Boulevard with a maximum height of sixteen feet above grade level. An amended Bercher Square master sign program, shared parking, outdoor dining and associated site improvements on an existing five point six seven acre parcel located in a town center, T C zoning district at one twenty-five North Milpitas Boulevard. Development of a new building and any free standing sign over six feet tall requires a site development permit and the drive-through and shared parking is considered conditionally permitted in the town center zoning district with a condition use permit. The site development permit amendment is to allow an update to the existing master sign program for the shopping center and a minor site development for, for conformance to outdoor dining standards. Picture shown here is a rendering of the front of the new building, uh, seen from the parking lot. Next slide, please. And here we see a satellite view of the project site, which is outlined in red. This is slightly northwest from the center of the city and is nearby city hall. Next slide, please. The general plan and zoning ordinance both designate the site as town center. The surrounding properties are one and two family residential to the north and west and town center to the south and east. The site is outlined in purple. Next slide, please. And to provide some background about the shopping center, both sides, north and south, were entitled separately. In nineteen seventy-nine, the redevelopment agency approved use permit number four oh, zero, one for Bercher Square South. In nineteen eighty-one, the redevelopment agency approved use permit number five twenty for Bercher Square North and the Orchard Supply Hardware Building. In August, twenty twenty-one, the planning commission approved a use permit and minor site development permit to allow the Schafford School to operate and allow for exterior modifications at the former Orchard Supply Building as a private preschool for, and elementary, elementary school. Existing site at Bercher Square North includes one approximate twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty square foot, one story, multi-tenant commercial building with up to eight tenants, which is referred to as building B in the reports and plans set. And an approximately forty-four thousand square foot private school building that is Schafford School with the maximum capacity of four hundred and eighty students for children in kindergarten and elementary school. Existing tenants in building B include a mix of sit-down and take down, takeout restaurants and personal service uses such as nail and hair salons, a bank and a dental clinic. On March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, Shuffle Properties, who is the applicant's and property owner, submitted a development application for the proposed project. The images here on top show the scope of the entire project and the middle image shows the existing building B. And the bottom image here, um, shows Schafford School. Uh, next slide, please. The project requires a site development permit to develop the new six thousand two hundred forty-five square foot one-story pad building, otherwise known as building A in the plans, at a maximum height of twenty-six feet above grade level with up to three retail commercial tenants and a drive-through for one of the tenants and associated site improvements to be developed within the eastern portion of the existing site. The applicant anticipates two restaurant tenants on both at our suites, uh, shown as tenants A one and A three of the new building with two outdoor dining areas totaling three hundred and sixty square feet in front of the each restaurants and a general retail tenant in the middle for tenant A two. Starbucks is the current prospective tenant, leased a tenant A one suite with a drive-through with, that has a queueing capacity of sixteen vehicles. The hours of operation proposed by Starbucks are Monday to Sunday, five A M. To ten P M. With an average number of four to six employees working each shift. The other future tenants are unknown at this time. Next slide, please. The site development permit request is also for a new monument sign greater than six feet tall, which requires approval by the planning commission. The applicant proposes to remove the existing six-foot-tall monument sign along the intersection of North Milpitas Boulevard and to replace it with a new sixteen-foot-tall monument sign. Existing monument sign is shown in the top left corner and as shown on the graphic in the top right, the new monument sign will be relocated from being predominantly on the East Calaveras Boulevard frontage to the North Milpitas Boulevard frontage due to a future Caltrans project to widen East Calaveras Boulevard where the existing monument sign is located. The new monument sign will be approximately seventeen feet wide and three and a half feet deep and will have a modern look, including illuminated channel letters. The new monument sign will be erected in an onsite landscape planter bed and will maintain a minimum planter area of three feet in every direction from the base of the sign and will be able to advertise up to seven of the tenants leasing the largest spaces in the shopping center. The proposed rendering of the new monument sign is shown in the bottom. Next slide, please. The project also includes a site development permit amendment to update the existing Bercher Square Master Sign Program. The existing sign program is a two-page memorandum dated June twelfth, nineteen ninety-seven with only written text and contains no graphics and is included as attachment D to the staff report. This existing sign program outlines regulations for all wall signs in the shopping center and does not include any specifications on the existing monument sign and only talks about three criteria regarding sign area, type of illumination and letter height and the logo size. The amended sign program consists of thirty-six pages of updated sign regulations and includes detailed information on submitted procedures, general requirements, types of allowed or prohibited signs, site plans, maps, graphics and specifications for wall signs for anchor tenants versus inline tenants, including the type of illumination and text or logo size. The new master sign program proposed is included as attachment E. And this amendment is necessary to allow the master sign program to include modernized sign regulations and standards with associated corresponding graphics and site plans for all tenants in the new pad building and the new monument sign, as well as clarify all of their sign requirements for the other tenants at the shopping center. And on this slide, I just wanted to show a page of some of the criteria for anchor tenants in the amended plan. The existing sign program doesn't differentiate by tenant type like this amended plan will. Um, next slide, please. And on this slide, I just wanted to show some of the other pages of the amended sign program, which includes helpful and colorful diagrams that differentiate the type of tenants and buildings and the type of sign regulations for each one. The bottom right is a sample of what the new signs may look like for the new building and the updated sign program. And when compared to the existing sign program from nineteen ninety-seven, this updated version provides more clarity for staff and applicants on designing signs for the shopping center. Next slide, please. The applicant also requests a minor site development permit to comply with outdoor dining regulations per Milpitas Municipal Code, section XI dash ten dash thirteen point nineteen. The project proposes a total of three hundred and sixty square feet of outdoor dining areas as part of the new building facing the parking lot with approximately two hundred square feet allocated to tenant A one and with sixty square feet to tenant A three. Each outdoor dining area will have detached aluminum trellises under twelve feet in heights for additional shape for visitors. The proposed outdoor dining areas include a total of eight tables with seating for approximately sixteen guests. And the two images on the right show the proposed trellis and patio furniture to be used. The new outdoor dining areas will be protected in screen by raised planter beds separating the drive-through lanes as shown by the green dots in the image and includes three foot tall decorative metal fencing to match the colors and materials for the proposed building as shown in the thin blue line. Next slide, please. The project requires approval of a conditional use permit to allow for the drive-through use. The proposed new building will include a drive-through serving one tenants and the drive-through will have two drive-through lanes that merge into one lane for a total storage capacity of sixteen cars. Customers will enter either lane along the south elevation that will merge into one lane along the east elevation by North Milpitas Boulevard and it will be screened by the trellis in a vertical green screen and the drive-through lane will end along the north elevation of the building. New directional signage, restrypping of the surface parking lot and adding new directional area, uh, arrows and signs to guide the drivers around the traffic are included as part of the project. A digital menu order screen and a five-panel menu sign is proposed as part of the project. A minute's master sign program for the drive-through tenant for customers to order after the lanes merge into one. Hexagon transportation consultants completed a transportation analysis for the proposed project, which is included as attachment B, included a queuing analysis of the proposed drive-through. Hexagon used data from two other California Starbucks drive-through locations and found that the proposed sixteen maximum vehicle queuing could be accommodated with the proposed design of the drive-through lanes. And in regards to other set improvements to allow for the project, one out of the four driveway access points will be closed off, which is the one closer to the intersection of, on North Milpitas Boulevard and Bercher Court on the Bercher Court frontage. The other three point access points will remain. And as a result, the onsite circulation around the southeast corner of the shopping center will be redesigned with a combination of one and two-way drive aisles with angled parking. The redesign will still meet the city's required dimensional and size standards of the parking stalls and drive aisleways as required by Milpitas Municipal Code, section XI dash ten dash fifty-three point thirteen design standards, and it was reviewed by Hexagon also for compliance. And regarding accessibility for pedestrians, including disabled persons, a new walkway will be provided from the sidewalk on North Milpitas Boulevard and allow access around the new pad building and to the parking lot as shown by the dotted green line. Hexagon did recommend to raise crosswalks at points where pedestrians could cross the drive-through aisle to improve pedestrian safety while crossing. And in coordination with city staff, the applicant has agreed to incorporate one of the raised crosswalks into the project design, which will be the one closest to North Milpitas Boulevard, but will not be able to include a second recommendation, um, for raised crosswalk leading to and from the new traction closure as issues with onsite drainage will occur. Next slide, please. The applicant also requests a shared parking arrangement with approval of a conditional use permit in accordance with Milpitas Municipal Code, section XI dash ten dash fifty-three point eleven. Existing parking will be shared with the other uses within the same lot, including building B and the Schafford School. And the use of shared parking is common in shopping standards within the city as an alternative to strictly applying the city planning code off-street parking ratios as a more efficient evaluation of anticipating parking supply and demand that can vary by use, time of day, day of week or weekend and season of the year. Pursuant to Milpitas Municipal Code, section XI dash ten, dash fifty-three point eleven B, shared parking can be allowed for mixed-use developments where uses are complementary to one another or shopping centers like this one where more than twenty percent of the grasslessable area is occupied by dining and entertainment uses, including pad restaurants of the kind proposed that are located within three hundred feet of other buildings in the shopping center. Hexagon transportation consultants completed a shared parking study for the shopping center, which is included as attachment C, to determine the amount of shared parking capacity needed for the proposed project in compliance with the methodology is outlined in the parking section of the code. in compliance with the methodologies outlined in the parking section of the code. Hexagon analyzed three different methods in the study. And as detailed in the report, Hexagon surveyed the project site to determine the existing parking demand at the shopping center to help the data and analysis for the second and third methodologies. The first method used was just to show a typical example of calculating the total amount of required parking for a project, including all the sum total requirements of various individual uses computed separately in accordance with the provisions of the off-street parking section required by land use in the code. There are currently two hundred and ninety-seven existing surface parking stalls at the site, which will be reduced to two hundred and twenty-three after construction of the project. Hexagon's first methodology showed that if using the strict application of the city's planning code for off-street parking, the total required off-street parking for the site would be two hundred and fifty-nine and resulting in deficit of about thirty-six parking stalls. And as a result of this parking desert using the standard approach, the applicant must seek the shared parking arrangement with the conditional use permit to satisfy parking requirements for all uses in Building A, B, and Stratford School. The second and third methodologies Hexagon involved a shared parking analysis approach in compliance with the strategies outlined in the city's municipal code. These methodologies demonstrate that the shared parking demands for all uses on the site will be satisfied by the two hundred and twenty-three stalls provided onsite after construction of the project. The second methodology included a shared parking analysis based on projected parking demand and city code requirements. Parking projections were developed for both proposed projects and existing land uses, including Stratford School. The time-of-day factors or peaking curves were applied to city code requirements for all individual uses, which differ throughout the day as presented by the shared parking publication by the Urban Land Institute, otherwise known as the ULI. For Stratford School, the time-of-day parking occupancy factors were developed based on the actual parking counts measured by Hexagon in the field for the use. Hexagon observed that the peak occupancy of the shopping center would occur at six PM with two hundred and seven vehicles parked onsite on a weekday. Using the second methodology with shared parking, the project site will be able to support all the proposed uses on the site and have a surplus of sixteen stalls. Hexagon's third methodology was another type of shared parking analysis using data from parking surveys at the site. It took into account the projected parking demand due to the proposed project and a seamless enrollment at the Stratford School. Parking projections for the proposed project were estimated using parking ratios specified in the code and applying the affirmative time-of-day factors similar to the second methodology by the ULI. For all other uses at the shopping center, the parking demand was taken from Hexagon's actual parking counts at the site. And Hexagon's research showed that the total parking peak demand, including the project, is projected to occur at twelve PM on a typical weekday with a hundred and seventy-seven occupied spaces and a surplus of forty-six stalls. Furthermore, in compliance with Lupita's municipal code section XI dash ten dash fifty-three point eleven H, the applicant has submitted a shared parking plan to the planning department that includes a signage plan that will direct drivers to the most convenient parking areas for each group of uses and a pedestrian circulation plan that shows connections and walkways between the parking areas and land uses. The use of this plan and adding new signage around the parking lot will assist visitors in understanding the times and allowable areas to park in. If the requested project entitlements are approved, the applicant will coordinate with the Stratford School, the tenants of Building B and the city's planning department during the building permit review phase of the project on specific language for the new signage around the parking lot. Overall, the parking study demonstrates that the site can accommodate the parking demand with two hundred and twenty-three stalls for all cumulative uses on the site when using shared parking and there could be a surplus of sixteen to eighty-five stalls, depending on the day and time of the week. Next slide, please. And as previously mentioned, the former vacant Osh Building was converted into a private school use by the Stratford School for children in preschool through the second grade in August twenty twenty-one with a conditional use permit. And during the review of this Stratford School CUP, the private school was required to devise a pickup and drop-off circulation plan to facilitate a streamlined flow of traffic with staggered times based on the grade or program level. Parents are advised by Stratford on the operations when students enroll into the school. A copy of this CUP staff report with a detailed description of the operations is included as attachment F. And the graphic here shows the school's shop-off and pickup operations. Currently, the operations for kindergarten and elementary school aged students is shown as the red arrows, where they will enter the site through the westernmost driveway and follow the north-south driveway aisle around Building B and proceed around the rear of the school building before exiting onto North Lupita's Boulevard. For younger students in pre-K or preschool, the route is shown with the green arrows. Parents will enter the existing center access point on Beresford Court and drive in front of Building B and will park in a separate loading and unloading area provided in front of the building with thirty-two marked stalls shown highlighted in light green. And also just to reiterate that pickup and drop-off times are staggered between the grades. A school's security guard monitors the flow of traffic to ensure the safety and compliance with the arrival and departure procedures for students. Hexagon reviewed the proposed project's pad building and drive-through circulation compatibility with these existing operations of Stratford School and found that all other driveways after closure of the one driveway on Beresford Court closest to North Lupita's Boulevard will be able to operate acceptably with no delay of cars queuing onto the streets. Additionally, the applicant has been in coordination with the Stratford School throughout development of the proposed project to minimize disruptions to the existing school's operations and to ensure safety is maintained during pickup and drop-off operations. The school has provided a letter of support for the proposed project and did not see an issue with parking or traffic flow after construction of the project, which is included as attachment G, and the applicant will continue to coordinate with the private school and Building B tenants to minimize disruptions during construction of the project. Next slide, please. And these are renderings of the building. The proposed building will be one-story with a maximum height of twenty-six feet above gray level. The applicant proposes earth-tone color palette and contemporary design for the new building. Decorative metal canopy awnings and shade structures further enhance the exterior of the building and landscaping improvements will provide additional character to the site. These renderings show different views of the proposed pad building, drive-through landscaping, and portions of the outdoor dining areas. The architectural elements of the building include colored stucco, decorative tile elements such as base accents, horizontal composite siding, large storefront windows, metal canopies, detached metal trellises for outdoor dining, and attached aluminum trellis with a green screen along the rear elevation of the building from the public driveway along North Lupita's Boulevard. Next slide, please. And the project's contemporary design includes muted earth-tone colors and materials in compliance with the planning code. Colors for the exterior include a mix of white, beige, brown, and gray shades. Large storefront glass windows will also be added, as well as metal accents for the canopy, trellises, decorative fencing, and patio furniture. Additionally, bike racks will be provided at the new building. Next slide, please. And in regards to landscaping, there are sixty-two existing trees on the site and eight of these trees will be removed to develop the proposed building. These trees are all under eight inches in circumference and do not meet the city's threshold for a separate tree removal permit under the city's tree removal ordinance, which requires which is for commercial properties is thirty-seven inches or greater as measured four and a half feet from the ground. Although it didn't require tree removal permit, the applicant still proposes to install seventeen replacement trees of various species for a total of seventy-one trees at the project site after construction of the project. These replacement trees will be twenty-four-inch box trees or larger and all will be planted onsite within the parking areas and landscaped areas, setbacks in our load of medium water use. The project will therefore be increasing the urban canopy on the site. The applicant is also installing drought-tolerant shrubs and ground cover, including but not limited to wildry, red yucca, smooth agave, feathery grass, and coral drift rose. Perimeter landscaped areas will be installed or enhanced along the property lines where the main project's scope is proposed. Next slide, please. And the applicant will have to pay the following impact fees, including the public art fee, which equals one-half to one percent of the building development costs. Additional standard development fees include water and sewer connection fees and a wastewater treatment fee for the additional connections to be serviced for the development. The project is also subject to the Calaveras Boulevard widening fee per resolution number seven, eight, nine, four. Next slide, please. And a notice was published on the Lupita's Post and at City Hall, as well as the city's website. About a hundred postcards were sent to property owners within one thousand feet of the project site. A sign was also posted at the project site. No comments ever received to date. Next slide, please. And also, although the entitlements did not meet the threshold for a required neighborhood meeting, the applicant agreed to host a neighborhood meeting based on staff suggestions to have a meeting to gauge input from surrounding neighbors on the proposed project as additional public outreach. The virtual meeting was held on Zoom on December twentieth, twenty twenty-three from four to six PM, an invitation for mail-out in a similar one-thousand-foot radius as previously described in the other slide. A total of ten participants were at the meeting with four of these members of the public. Most of the questions were regarding the project design or Stratford School and its potential impacts to operations, as well as construction timing and general questions about the shopping center. One of the neighbors did bring up a complaint about a noisy metal vault cover in the driveway behind Stratford School that made substantial noise as cars drove past it. However, the applicant has since noted that the vault was repaired since hearing about this and the issue impacting the neighbors to the north and now no longer has this noise issue. A summary of the neighborhood meeting is included as attachment J. Next slide, please. Staff has confirmed that the project meets the findings associated with the site development permit for the new building set out in the Lupita's municipal code. Those findings are discussed in the staff report and addressed in the resolution. Next slide. Staff has also confirmed that the project meets the findings associated with the site development permit for a freestanding sign over six feet tall and a site development permit amendment to update the master sign program for Beresford Square as set out in the Lupita's municipal code. These findings are also discussed in detail in the staff report and resolution. Next slide, please. Staff has also confirmed that the project meets the findings associated with the conditional use permit for drive-throughs and shared parking as set out in the Lupita's municipal code. The findings, again, have been discussed in the staff report and resolution. The applicant has also provided consultant prepared transportation and parking study reports that demonstrate the project will not have traffic impacts and that shared parking will meet the demand for all uses on the site. Next slide. Staff has confirmed that the project meets the findings associated with the minor site development permits for outdoor dining as set out in the municipal code. These findings are also detailed in staff report and resolution. Next slide, please. The project is exempt from CEQA per CEQA guidelines section one-five-three-three-two and one-five-one-eight-three. The project meets the definition of an infill development project and that the project will occur within an existing urbanized area within the city, has no value as habitat for endangered, rare, or threatened species, and will not result in any significant impacts relating to traffic, noise, air quality, or water, air quality or water quality. In addition, the project is consistent with the general plan, land use designation, and zoning ordinance requirements as provided under CEQA guideline section one-five-one-eight-three. Therefore, no further environmental review is required. Next slide, please. In closing, staff recommends the planning commission open the public hearing to receive comments, move to close the public hearing, consider the exemptions in accordance with CEQA adopted resolution twenty-four dash zero zero zero-two-two, approving site development permit number SD twenty-two dash zero zero one-one, conditional use permit number UP twenty-two dash zero 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 five, site development permit amendment SA twenty-three dash zero 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 five, and minor site development permit number MS twenty-four dash zero one four five, subject to the findings and attached conditions of approval. And this concludes staff summary of the project. I'm happy to answer any questions and furthermore, the project applicant team, including Thomas Jaja from Chappelle and Greg James from the architecture team, are there in person, as well as their subconsultants are available for questions, including their civil engineer, landscape architect, traffic consultant, and always an air quality consultant, which are available virtually. And also, when the commissioners, I feel like it's the correct time, Mr. Jaja and Mr. James, do not have slides to show, but would like to share some thoughts when you may allow them to. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Is somebody else gonna share, Christina, or?
Oh, I think my applicants just wanted to talk a little bit about the project, but they don't have slides. I think they're there in person.
It's fine. Good evening. Would you state your name for the for the record? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Thomas Jaja with Chappelle Properties. I'm the regional director of the Northern California Commercial Division for the company.
And I'm Greg James, principal and vice president of MMA Architecture.
Good evening. Go ahead.
Great. We appreciate you considering the project. We want to let you know that the design took some time because of the complexity of the site and our desire to maintain a good balance of the uses in the shopping center, especially given that we have the private school. So a lot of care was taken in designing the site and keeping the drive-through customers away from the students. So we did that intentionally so that would minimize any crossover or problem. And that's evident in the school's letter of support, which they provided to us. As far as a prior comment about the drive-through tenant being Starbucks, just for the record, they have not yet signed a lease with us, but we've been deep in negotiations with them for the past little over a year and a half.
Yeah, and I think as Christina had pointed out, the design of the building, you know, we've used the earth-tone colors that go with the city ordinances and to fit with the surrounding community. And then at the same time, a little bit more modern look to the building to kind of bring it into this this era.
Any questions for us, or?
Commissioners, any question?
Vice Chair, go ahead. So I love the design. I love the colors, everything. Do you guys have plans to update the other buildings in the complex in the?
The other, the other buildings were remodeled about eight years ago, so they received new paint and siding. So in the longer-term plans, we have been in discussions with the city about changes in zoning and and so we, we do like to keep a long-term view in mind, but we don't have any concrete plans like at the moment to do another rehab to the larger center. Yeah.
I mean, it looks nice. I would love even just the facade would.
Well, I appreciate that. We'll, we can do some incremental things, but like nothing like large-scale like is planned in the, in the near term.
Yeah, I love it.
Thank you.
And I was just gonna make also that having all those trees and more greenery that is something that will make the city lush and green. On that pad, you had said it was like the drive-through Starbucks. What other, what other two other are plans? You don't know yet?
We're not, not sure yet. Nothing concrete.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions?
I have a question to Christina. Christina, what are the hours of during construction? What are the hours of operation? During construction?
During construction of the project, they would be subject to the city's, you know, standard construction hours. I could try to pull those up, but you know, they will have to comply with that and that's going to be analyzed further by the building department when they submit their building permits.
And Commissioner, just for clarification from the legal side of things, the permitting process they go through for a building have conditions that are imposed both for encroaching permits and other permits, setting out those conditions of construction. There is a general time window that applies to all construction with the city that can also be limited specifically because of impacts to particular uses in the area in different ways. So the, the generalized time limit may not be the time limit imposed on this particular construction. It's up to the building official at the time.
Christina, the rear building is facing Lupita's Boulevard, correct?
New building, the rear of it will be facing.
Okay, there is, he said there is a drive-through and then where that coming from, there is any driveway going to the drive-through? Is it coming from the Beresford or Lupita's Boulevard?
So if anyone wants to pull up the site plan again, the applicants would generally, I mean, there's different arrows, right? You can enter either through Lupita's Boulevard or Beresford Court, but you will have to enter either dual driveline from the south elevation, which is closer to Beresford Court. But you can enter through either way. There will be arrows directing drivers.
There's a period of time as per Stratford School's conditional use permit where ingress is not allowed at that more northern entrance off of North Lupita's Boulevard. It's our plan to have more of the drive-through traffic come down Beresford Court and then go north into that entrance and enter the queue. That would be the more natural way to access the drive-through lane.
My concern is during school hours of Stratford School. My concern is during school hours of the Stratford School during the morning, normally Starbucks would be in seven o'clock or eight o'clock in the morning. Do you think it's not gonna be a problem?
Starbucks indicated to us that their max their, their max is approximately around sixteen cars. So as we design the, this double queue, it can handle sixteen cars without any cars peeking out to the west and, and blocking. And then moreover, the design of that, of the new pad building was such that any backup won't interfere with the school's drop-off and pickup queue.
Okay, so the car, the car if you're going to drive through, it should be the rear building, right? So it's on the rear building of this project?
So in looking at the site plan that they have up right now, those red arrows are from the Stratford conditional use permit and that's Stratford Schools pickup and drop-off queue. Parents go west on Beresford Court and then north behind the shop building B and then around the back of the school and then out to drop off the kids. Yeah, so that's their, that's Stratford's main.
What I'm saying is going to drive through, be going behind that building, right?
No, there, there's an entrance on Beresford Court. So if you look at the bottom of the screen, you see where those green arrows are in front of. So to the east of shop building B, that's the entrance and that first drive aisle that you come to as you enter the shopping center off of Beresford Court. Okay, it's going to be restripped so that it's the, the choice there will be for the vehicle to go to the, to the east and then go down and either park or enter the drive-through.
And so just to quickly follow up, hours of construction are seven AM to seven PM each day, but of course excluding any holidays.
Looking at the front front building and there's this middle of this building is shorter than the other. Why, why, why is that shorter? The height?
What? The, all the buildings at the project are single story?
But the total height is, the two of them are taller than the middle. But what?
There, go ahead. That's more.
So yeah, so from the design of the building, then to give it some variation, you, you can, you variate the building by up and, you know, higher portions of the building, lower portions. Also protruding elements to make a tower element. So the corners are kind of tower, tower elements and the middle is a little bit lower. So it's just to give it, you know, if it was all one height going all the way across, it would be very boring.
Where's the, is there any back door?
Yeah, there are back doors. So the back doors, if you look at, I don't know if you guys, do you guys have A two O one in your package? Christina, do they have?
Medina, Medina, if you could pull up slide fourteen. It's a little difficult to see because right, some of the rear shows the vertical screening, but due to building code and fire code requirements, they are required to have a certain number of doors around certain elevations.
So what on that, on that rear elevation that you see, that would be the view from Milpitas? What you'll see from Milpitas is the colonnade with the, with the green screen that's built between the colonnade. That green screen will be hiding the vehicles that are in the carpool or that are in the drive-through lane and will be hiding the doors, the rear doors to the building and the service doors. You won't see them from the street.
Thank you, Commissioner Galang. I think Commissioner Gupta had something.
Okay, I was also concerned about the traffic congestion because of the drive-through as well as the drop-off from Stratford School, but I think you have already addressed addressed that. So I'm not going to kind of elaborate on that. Now, I know that Starbucks was across the street from where your location is and it was closed down sometime ago. I don't know why they closed down and then planning to operate through your location. Do you know any reason or any background? Probably not, right?
No. Chappelle originally developed that building across the street that they were in, but it was sold some years ago. So I'm, I'm not a party to that lease or to what transpired between the owner of the building and Starbucks.
Okay, so, so here, here's the question about, it looks like the whole complexity of your design and structure and layout is based on this Starbucks drive-through. And, and what happens if Starbucks deal doesn't go through? Will you then have to make any major changes to your design?
No, that, that's a good question. Well, they all were, all were very good questions, but in working with our traffic engineer, the type of use that's drive-through coffee is the, one of the most intensive uses. So that gives us, in these conditions of approval, it gives us a lot of bandwidth to shift to a slightly lesser demanding use if needed with, with another drive-through operator. We did get other drive-through interest, but we're particularly focused on this one just because we think it would be a very nice benefit to the shopping center and community. So we're working with them, but we do have some other folks who had expressed interest.
So you'll not have to come back to the city for approval in case drive-through doesn't happen?
The, the drive-through component of it is fairly important, but it was designed in such a way that gives us flexibility to stay within what is, is being approved tonight and to make a slight shift in who that actual operator is.
Thank you, Commissioner. Planning Director has something to say.
Yeah, Commissioner Gupta, that's a great question and I could add a little bit since planning will typically make that determination. As long as the use is not intensifying, it shouldn't need to come back to the planning commission. If, if it's a similar drive-through and a different drive-through operator comes in, then that use is continuing and it's just a new operator. If there are minor physical changes, if they are minor enough, they typically are approved at staff level or possibly zoning administrator.
Thank you. Thank you, Planning Director. Yes, Commissioner Kong.
Hi, I have several question regarding the outdoor dining patio space. Tell me again about the fencing and the access points because my concern is pedestrian safety. Will there be pedestrian getting out from the outdoor dining through the queuing line of the, the fast food or the drive-through?
No, but excuse me, the way we have it designed is we do have a fence that goes around the patio between the drive-through area and the outdoor dining as well as a planter. So there's a, there's a planner buffer and then beyond the planner is a decorative.
Okay, and where is the pedestrian access? Is it through indoor of the building and out to the patio or is it from the parking lot?
It, it would be from the, from the, the pedestrian, from the exterior side of the building. So you would go from the parking lot, you go up to the front of the building and then you would come into the patio. So it won't have, unless there was some tenant that came in that had alcohol use, it wouldn't have a fence completely around the patio, just protecting the pedestrians from the parking and the drive-through.
Okay, so there will still be an exterior access?
Yes.
All right. And there are two planned outdoor dining areas. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions, Commissioner? So we can open for the public forum. No other question? Right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Christina. I'll open now the public forum if anybody has some questions. Do we have any online?
No speaker cards for this item, Chair.
No speaker cards, okay. Yeah, so may I have a motion to close the public forum in a second? Public hearing, I'm sorry, yes, public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Gupta and Vice Chair. Both please.
Commissioner Kong.
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Galang.
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby.
Aye.
And Chair Albana.
Aye.
Thank you.
Our next item would be, oh, go ahead. Then both. Commissioners, anything else that you could say? Can I have a motion then?
I make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty four dash zero two two recommending the planning commission approve a site development, conditional use permit, site development permit amendment and minor site development permit subject to the findings and conditions of approval.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Gupta and Commissioner Kong for a second.
Commissioner Kong.
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Galang.
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby.
Aye.
And Chair Albana.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we go to item number nine four, the new private high school at one three two three Great Mall to be presented by our Mr. Avery Stark.
Thank you. Good evening. Chair, Vice Chair, Planning Commission, so the public and staff. My name is Avery Stark, acting senior planner with the planning department. And the item in front of you again, as noted, is for a new private middle and high school at one three two three, that's a typo, Great Mall Drive, my apologies. Conditional use permit, a site development permit, an environmental assessment and then a development agreement. Next slide please. The applicant Jeremy Theodore from Inhabit Design, representing the Stratford School along with Sean Morley and a number of others have applied for a series of planning entitlements to request the operation of a private middle and high school and existing fifty one thousand seven hundred and forty square foot, two-story office building and the development of a new seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-three square foot gymnasium building and other site improvements on a three acre lot located again at one three two three Great Mall Drive. Next. Here we see a satellite view of the project site outlined in blue. The Great Mall surrounds the site to the north, the existing Stratford School to the south, a hotel uses to the east, multi-family residential and a vacant lot to the west. Project site is bounded by Great Mall Parkway and close to the intersection of Montague Expressway. The site is located within the Milpitas Metro Specific Plan or the MMSP. The specific plan designation is Business Park Research and Development with limited residential, referred to as BPRD dash R. And their plan implementing zone district for that designation is BPRD dash R. However, currently the project site has not been rezoned and as such, the current zoning designation is general commercial C two with a transit-oriented development TOD overlay. And we'll talk more about that in a moment. This table here, table four of your staff report and on the screen is a summary of the project's development standards. The project is generally consistent with the most of the applicable development standards in the Metro Specific Plan in the Business Park Research and Development. And then the general commercial and also talks about the general commercial with the TOD overlay as well. And it's important to understand that when we have a specific plan present, the development standards shall operate as the zoning regulations and for the subject property. And where the standards are not listed within not specific plan, the zoning ordinance shall regulate. The city council has adopted phase one of the zoning code update, which will establish the new BPRD development standards and will create alignment between the Metro Specific Plan and the zoning that regulates. That's been adopted earlier this month and will go into effect in thirty days.
Thirty days after the second reading.
After the second reading, thank you. And then where the project does not comply with development standards as listed under that comply section, they will be addressed by the development agreement and will be mitigated for. Next please. Here we have a rendering of the proposed school. On the left-hand side of your screen is the existing office building and then to the, to adjacent to that will be the new gymnasium and then the athletic field. So that scope again includes the improvement of the exterior facade, upgrades that existing commercial office building, which will be the container for the new school use itself. And then proposed site includes the new gymnasium, which will be thirty-five feet tall and then an additional roughly fifteen thousand square foot artificial turf playfield to the west of the new gymnasium building. The existing building will receive light exterior and cosmetic refinishing, including new off-white paint on the concrete surfaces, painted metal panel accents, added entry and canopy and the Stratford's blue branding colors and will include new signage. The existing parking areas will also be restripped and relabeled to indicate dedicated parking spaces for staff, the pickup and drop-off zone for students and new spaces for electric vehicle charging and accessible parking. Next. A little hard to see on the screen, but in your packet for the plan set, these are the architectural elevations and outlining the modifications to the existing building to create continuity throughout the site. Again, that design includes varying facades, new colors and materials to create a nice dynamic building that will distinguish the structure within the Metro Specific Plan. And those exterior colors on both buildings will have a variety of dark blues, light beige and off-white paint. Exterior materials for both buildings will also include concrete material, gray brick, glass as depicted here on these elevations and in your packet of plans. In addition to this, the site will also include, as you can see there on the elevations, a new six-foot tall wrought iron fence to encompass the entire project site. Here we have, the existing building will be remodeled to accommodate for the new school's interior organization and classroom amenities. This first floor plan includes the construction of six general classrooms, multipurpose hall with an attached stage, staff lounge, offices, a conference room, teacher work rooms, a library, music rooms, various restroom facilities for staff and students, kitchen, locker rooms, gym storage and an entryway lobby. Next. Here we have the second floor, which consists of ten classrooms, one computer science, two physics and engineering, three art classrooms, four biochemistry rooms, two multimedia common spaces and various restroom facilities for students and staff. Next slide. Can I talk a little bit about the hours of operation here? The private high, middle school, high school will serve up to a maximum of five hundred students comprised of sixth through twelfth graders. The school's operating hours will be Monday through Friday, seven AM to six PM with campus opening at seven and staff arriving between seven and seven thirty. Students arriving between seven thirty and eight with classes beginning at eight AM. Classes will end roughly three thirty in the afternoon with students departing between three thirty and four. Most staff departing after that between four and four thirty. And extracurricular activities continuing in smaller numbers from three thirty to six and in smaller quantities of students and staff leaving at that time at around six PM. The school will also hold occasional evening and weekend events such as basketball, volleyball or other sporting events in the new gym or theater events, graduation events inside the building, parent-teacher conference nights where they're rarely going to exceed two hundred people, but at a maximum of five hundred as prescribed. And those will operate within the hours of seven AM to ten PM weekdays and weekends. Next slide. I'll talk a little bit here about the general circulation of the site. The study was conducted in accordance with requirements and methodologies set forth by the city of Milpitas, the Valley Transportation Authority, Caltrans and applicable provisions. the Valley Transportation Authority, Caltrans, and applicable provisions of SEQA. And based on the project's design and required transportation impact analysis guidelines, uh, traffic operations would have no significant impacts according to the established traffic engineering standards, and no off-site traffic or transportation mitigations are required of the project. The project site will utilize two existing driveways, um, along Great Mall Drive and Falcon Drive. Entrances to the project site at both driveways would be gated in the evening during school hours, um, and throughout the portion of the day. The site provides one-way vehicular circulation with an entrance lane from the Great Mall Drive at the north side of the site. Um, and then vehicles will travel through, it is the red dashed lines there that you see with arrows through the site to the driveway along Falcon Drive. And that just, this image here illustrates that planned vehicular queuing. And then there also shows the drop-off location where eight vehicles, um, would be able to stop and drop off a student. And then as you continue, um, east in the project size and south, there's also going to be an adjournment to the southern Stratford School property, where in the event that a parent likely has a student attending both the high school and the elementary school, would be able to go from the northern portion of the site to the southern portion of the site, um, while maintaining consistent traffic patterns. There will be a school security guard, uh, that will monitor the traffic flow to ensure, uh, safety and compliance with students traveling in departure routes. And the school's protocol is to have staff with walkie-talkies at the site's entrance of driveways, at the entry gates, and along the drop-off aisles to, uh, be able to communicate back and forth with parents and students, uh, departing and arriving to ensure, um, each person is proceeding in the correct direction, um, and in a timely fashion. And one important thing to note that there's a private school with a code of conduct. The school can also manage its student population of drivers. Um, students of driving age are only allowed to do so with assigned parking passes after their required passes for staff have been provided. And they are also required to sign a handbook and will, uh, required to be not allowed to park in the neighborhood or like in the Great Mall parking areas just to the north. Um, and the proposed security cameras and security systems of the site would help, uh, to ensure efficient traffic circulation and maintain safeguards to site access. There's also a public sidewalk that runs along the north and east ends of the property that provides pedestrian access to the north sides and east sides of the school. And in addition to that, the site will be, uh, surrounded by a new six-foot-tall ornamental metal fence, um, which will also, uh, encompass the artificial turf play area, which will prevent vehicles from being able to entering or driving into the site, uh, from a Great Mall Parkway and protects, uh, the play area and that, uh, turf area from vehiculars, uh, in the queuing area, um, as they enter the school property. And it's important to note that no vehicles can enter the site and queue from Falcon Drive, and that the Transportation Department within the city has reviewed this project, its site plans, plan queuing, the pickup and drop-off, and has determined that the project will not have any traffic impacts on public streets. The staff has also determined that the site's circulation functionality would not cause safety or operational problems for the, uh, existing Stratford School or the adjacent neighbors and tenants. Next slide. Here we have a landscape design which includes the combination of the existing landscape. Um, the project would remove approximately thirty-five non-ordinance-sized trees. However, the project would also preserve, uh, fifty-six trees that are on-site that are in fair to good health, and six new trees will be planted on-site. And then according to the project's preliminary landscape plans, there's no existing trees on-site with a trunk circumference greater than thirty-seven inches when measured four and a half feet up from the ground that would require a tree removal permit. An additional various shrubs will be planted across the project site, as shown in the landscape sheet L-one-dash, or L-dash-one-point-O, which are attached in your, uh, project plans as attachment C. Next. Talk a little bit about safety and security. The Milpitas Police Department reviewed the project and prescribed several measures, um, to ensure that the safety and security of the overall site and its occupants all have been included in the resolution as project conditions of approval. For example, the outdoor play area is fenced off, separating it from the parking lot in Great Mall Parkway. And as conditions, security cameras will cover the outdoor play areas. Other conditions addressed high-definition video surveillance, adequate exterior lighting, posted exterior site signage to discourage trespassing or loitering, and filing emergency contact information with the police department. Next. Talk a little bit about development fees. Um, the project will be, uh, required to pay the public art fee, which again is one-half of one percent in lieu of providing public art on-site, which is currently set, um, based on an estimated, uh, building cost development of twenty million, uh, would be an estimated one-hundred-thousand-dollar fee to the city. And then second fee would be the Transit Area Specific Plan, or the TATA fee, um, which is currently set for commercial square footage at thirty-two dollars and seventy-five uh, cents per square foot, and then will be calculated against the new gym, which is again seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-three square feet with an estimated project, uh, payment of that in lieu fee at two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand one-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Next. And then we're going to talk just about the development agreement, which is also part of this project. As the project is eligible for a development agreement because the opening and pre-enrollment process of a school requires significant front-end investment that would otherwise, uh, long-term, uh, would create long-term uncertainty for the, on the part of the applicant. And at least, uh, and for the portion of a five-year term for the currently proposed agreement, which is also attached as a part of the ordinance for the adoption of the development agreement attached to this packet. And through the proposed agreement, the landowner and the city would preserve the floor area ratio, or the far, and the side and front yard setbacks previously allowed under the subject property under the TASP development standards, and thereby allowing for the beneficial reuse of an existing, uh, building to be developed under the previous standards with additional construction improvements only allowable through the benefit of this agreement. The proposed agreement therefore allows the redevelopment of a site, um, uh, long underutilized, including during the entirety of the TASP, uh, and subject generally to the existing standards and select rece- recently revised task, uh, standards that have been adopted as a part of the Metro-Specific Plan. The, um, the proposed agreement will hold these standards open for a period of five years. Should further redevelopment of the site, um, be sought during that period of time, um, unless the proposed changes would expand the building footprint or increase the student capacity over five hundred students, in which case the project would need to be re-entitled in conformity with the current development standards. So again, this is, uh, eligible for a number of reasons, but it's particularly because of the, uh, recent adoption of the Metro-Specific Plan and the timing of which this applicant sought, uh, this proposal with the city. Thank you, Liz. Uh, staff generally finds that the project meets the site development permit findings, specifically that the proposed site layout modification and design, including the new gymnasium building renovations to the existing structures, landscaping are compatible and aesthetically harmonious with adjacent surrounding development. And where that project does not comply with the development standards, the development agreement or the DA will address and mitigate for it. Our findings can be found in both the staff report and the resolution. Next. Again, continued staff generally find that the project meets the requirements for a conditional use permit and that the proposed private middle and high school facility will serve the community as designed and will not have any detrimental injurious impacts on the property or improvements of the vicinity's properties. And then again, where the property does not comply with development standards, the development agreement will address and mitigate. Those founding, findings can all be found in the staff report. Next. And then finally, we have the, uh, findings particular to the Development Agreement Resolution Number six-six-four-two, adopted by council in Section four-point-two. Again, consistency with the general and specific plans, the project aligns generally with the, the policies outlined in the Milpita Specific Plan, um, and consistent with the Metro-Specific Plan Tables Three and Four of the staff report. Um, the environmental and community benefit, uh, be a certified lead building, um, surpassing the city green building standards that we have in place. There will also be a one-million-dollar community benefit payment to the city to serve, uh, important and other amenities that might be needed to be built or created in the future in this area of the city. And for health and safety and general welfare, um, the enhance of the community and well-being uh, with appropriate traffic devan- traffic devan- management, TDM programs, like providing bus passes and access to the VTA light rail or to, um, the BART. This site also includes a number of bicycle parking spaces for students and teachers who may ride their bicycles to and from work if they're living in the Milpitas community. And additionally to that, the development agreement findings, uh, find that it promotes a cohesive development within the Metro-Specific Plan area, and including of a private high school enhances the educational opportunities of the city of Milpitas. And this then further supports future residential growth, fostering a vibrant and educated community. Next. Uh, staff provided public notice for the application in accordance with city and state public noticing requirements. The city published a public hearing notice in the Milpitas Post on June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and sent notices via mail to two thousand six hundred and twenty residents and owners within a thousand feet of the subject property. The sign was placed and posted on the project site. And as of this evening, the staff has received twenty-one comments sent to the Commissioners as an additional attachment to the packet. All twenty-one comments are in support of the project. Next. For environmental review and SEQA, uh, with, the SEQA analysis was performed by Impact Sciences on behalf of the city. And on the basis of the initial study, Impact Sciences concluded that the project will not have a significant impact on the environment accordingly, and have prepared a mitigated negative declaration, or an MND. And on May twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-four, the city provided a notice of intent to adopt a mitigated negative declaration to the public, responsible agencies, trustee agencies, and the County Clerk of Santa Clara. The draft ISMND, it was available for public review and comments, uh, from May twenty-ninth through June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. At the time of the publishing of this report and end of this meeting, the city has not received any public comments on the ISMND. Next. Thank you. In closing, staff recommends that the Planning Commission open and close the public hearing, consider that the initial, consider the initial study a mitigated negative declaration, or ISMND, and adopt Resolution Number twenty-four dash zero-two-one, recommending that the City Council approve Site Development Permit Number zero SD twenty-three dash zero-zero-one-two, EA twenty-four dash zero-zero-one, and DA twenty-four dash zero-zero-one, and Resolution Number twenty-four dash twenty-three, recommending that the City Council approve Use Permit Number UP twenty-three dash zero-zero-eight, based on the above findings and subject to the conditions of approval. This concludes staff's, uh, summary and presentation of the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. We also have the applicant here, along with the representatives in the audience today, um, if you have any questions directly for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Avery. But Commissioners, you have any questions for Avery first before we bring the applicant?
Yes, let me, let me start this time.
Yeah, we should go.
So, first of all, the current school is elementary and middle school, right? Goes up to grade eight. And now you're adding a second building with grade six to twelve, so why you have that overlap?
So, in the beginning, yes.
And then ninth to twelve.
Well, great question. So currently, operationally, they plan to transition as they move students from the lower campus into the upper campus. So right now, in the beginning, it may operate from six to twelve, but the intention is that eventually it would operate from a nine to twelve, and then that would then adjust how they, um, fluctuate students between the two campuses. But currently, as entitled, the proposal is to allow for there to be, uh, sixth graders through twelfth graders in the new campus.
So, continuing on, so the current, uh, school has six hundred and seventy-four students, if I read that right. And with the twelve-to-one teacher-to-student ratio, and then additional staff, so how many parking spots are currently taken in that current school?
So I don't have the specifics of the current school because that current school's entitlement, um, and analysis was already completed and approved by the city and is not inherently pertinent to this new entitlement as this is a separate parcel and separate set of buildings that are being approved or proposed for approval.
Okay, so let's just talk about the new school then. We're adding five hundred students. And, uh, uh, so with twelve-to-one, assuming the same ratio, comes to what, about forty parking spots? And then, uh, for, for the teachers, I'm telling you. And then what about the staff? How much staff will be there in, in, in the new school?
So the required parking for this site is based on the Metro-Specific Plan, which, uh, is a significant decrease in parking than what I think the commission is, is used to because of its proximity to the metro, um, to the BART and to VTA light rail. So, our zoning code actually prescribes a maximum required of one space per one thousand square feet of non-residential uses. So therefore, the existing building plus the new gymnasium and artificial turf is required to provide seventy-four off-street parking spaces when you add up both of those new buildings and then divide them by one thousand square feet. Um, so the current site will preserve existing sixty-six spaces, um, as a part of the existing design of the commercial space, the office space, and then, and then northern and eastern portions. And then it will also construct eight new spaces, resulting in that total of seventy-four spaces.
So, I, I, I don't think you answered my question. So, how, how much staff i- will be there in the new school?
The total new staff in the new school, let me take a look, I don't have that off the top of my head. Do you know off the top of your head? Maximum of seventy-five.
Seventy-five staff?
Correct.
So if you start adding up, so seventy-five for the staff, about forty teachers, right?
That includes the teachers, seventy-five.
Seventy-five includes the teacher, okay.
Would include.
Okay, sorry. Okay, seventy-five teachers and staff.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, you have, uh, eleventh and twelfth grades, at least, if students will be driving in. How many students are you expecting, grade eleven and twelve?
As a part of their operational require, of their standards, um, first, they would provide and prescribe parking spaces for teachers and staff of the high school. And if there are remaining spaces available, then they would be able to provide student passes. But that, they would have, because they're a private high school, they would also have the ability to restrict their students from driving to their campus. If there's not sufficient parking on site.
Seventy-five is already beyond the parking capacity you, you have.
Correct.
About the same.
So the.
So that means, uh, no students will be able to park.
Theoretically, yes, there could be no students that would be allowed to park on this campus.
That's different than your proposal. It talks about at least allowing parking for eleventh and twelfth grade.
So it, it does have the capacity or the potential to allow for those students. Again, once they get into operations, they may find that some of those teachers may build a carpool, some of those teachers may be taking VTA or BART, or they're not going to be actually on-site with a vehicle where there may be allowable spaces that they can dedicate to students. But again, the maximum requirement of the parking is set by the Metro-Specific Plan, which is one, one per one thousand square feet of non-residential space.
That's the guideline, we had to see in practical terms.
So the ma- the maximum is the cap, we can't exceed that.
Yeah. So is that the same answer from the, from the owners? What you're giving?
Yes, you can certainly ask them, uh, additional questions if you would like. Sounds good. Again, I'm providing with, to you, the factual information as provided in the code and regulations as prescribed by the city.
Okay, now let's come to, uh, drop-off, uh, and, and pickup of the students.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, is the timing of the new school going to be the same starting time as the current school?
Generally, it is in with, within the same kind of bandwidth of time. Again, the, the traffic analysis that was conducted by Hexagon was for looking at both the upper campus, the new proposed school, and the lower campus. And in conjunction with both operational requirements, found that there's not going to be a significant impact to the traffic, uh, demand or the number of vehicles that would be on-site, given that there's still a potential that you'd have a parent dropping off a student at the upper campus, making their way through the upper campus to the lower campus, where they would still begin queuing for the elementary school and maybe dropping off another student. So an attachment to the environmental ISMND was the Hexagon memorandum that spoke to the VMT analysis and the on-site traffic operational requirements.
So what I understand is, in the current school, already in the drop-off time, uh, and even in, possibly the pickup, especially the drop-off time, there is a congestion. Sometimes it takes fifteen, twenty minutes for them to drop in, there is, uh, a traffic kind of jams up. So when you have additional school and five hundred students, will not, won't that make it worse?
So the timelines you're outlining aren't actually times that are outlined in the document. Those would be assumptions that you're making, and so it's important to recognize that. And, and I know that the applicant can speak more specifically to the operations of the school, but the analysis that was conducted for both campuses in conjunction. But the analysis that was conducted for both campuses in conjunction has found that there is not going to be a significant impact based on the analysis and traffic measures that we have in place. I don't know if you want us.
It seems to me that the drop-off, the starting time of the new school should be slightly altered maybe by half an hour.
Is it? Okay. I don't have that staff report in front of me.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that, yeah, I think half an hour difference will make a big improvement. That solves that issue.
Yes, that's.
Okay, I know for the question. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments, Commissioner Kala?
Yes, hi, Mr. Avery. There is a security guard. You mentioned that a security guard from arrival up to departure, correct?
Correct.
Till what time? Because you mentioned here the school ends up to ten P M. So did the security guard stay until ten P M?
So it's an operational requirement that I will let the applicant address. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay, perfect, yeah. Again, those very intricate operational requirements aren't a part of the purview of what we're looking at necessarily when it comes to how they want to prescribe their way of conducting business onsite. So yeah, those will all be great questions to hold for the applicant.
And about, it says here, the first floor plan includes ten, six general classrooms. And there is a stage staff lounge, still separate for the six general classroom in the first floor?
Could you repeat the question?
It says, the first floor plan includes construction of six general classrooms, multipurpose hall with attached stage, staff lounge, offices, class conference room, teachers' workroom. It is separate than the six general classrooms, correct?
From the other types, yeah. So the first floor has a series of classrooms in it, has six general classrooms. And in addition to those general classrooms, there is, again, the site plan outlines a library, there is a theater room, there's facilities and bathrooms for both students and teachers, there's a staff lounge. So there are a number of other, again, there the the screen illustrates in front of you, there's a variety of different types of classrooms and rooms and workrooms on the first floor.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Also the same, the second floor, and ten classrooms, then there's one computer science, two physics that are always separate.
Right, so yeah. So as described in the staff report and as Ms. Medina has placed on the screen, if you can go to the second floor, Liz. Oh, that is the second floor, okay. Thank you. Yeah, so along the perimeter, you've got classrooms, bathrooms, and then you'll also have, oh, that's a typo on the slide, I think. That's why that's confusing. The second floor is slightly different configuration, but again, consists of a number of classrooms, general classrooms, media, common rooms, physics, engineering, computer science classrooms, and the like.
The exit emergency door is still the same from the previous, the emergency exit door.
So the design of the building in concert with our fire department and building department was reviewed and analyzed to ensure that there were appropriate exits and egress and ingress accesses to the building. And so there are changes in some areas where there maybe are more doors, but generally speaking, the building will be built to building code to ensure that there are proper exiting pathways for students and teachers in the event, hopefully unlikely of an emergency in the building.
You know, at this time, maybe I'd like to ask the applicant, maybe, and Avery, you can, so that it could be more spontaneous, because sometimes you can answer, he can answer, so we don't have to. It'll be, sure, welcome. We'll have like a panel.
Chair, it might be helpful at this juncture to allow the applicant to be able to give their presentation so that they can give the information they want to give before they answer any specific questions.
Would you like to do that? Yes, why don't you give us your presentation?
Yes, please. Great. Thank you very much. Chairperson Albana and commissioners, my name is Kelly Woods. I'm the executive vice president for strategic growth at Spring Education Group, and we are the parent company of Stratford Schools. We're very pleased to present to you our new middle and high school campus this evening, and we appreciate the staff's recommendation for approval of the project applications. The city planning team has done a great job of explaining the project and sharing slides, so we will not duplicate that. But I do want to offer some brief comments about Stratford and why this small urban upper school campus is so important to us and for the city. For those of you who don't know Stratford, we are a private school and we offer preschool through twelfth grade education at many small campuses throughout the Bay Area. Milpitas is definitely one of our most successful and engaged communities. We have three campuses in the city today, but no high school. Stratford families have chosen the private school path and want to be able to continue their education with us through high school, but they currently have to leave the city of Milpitas to find other private high schools. This campus will allow us to serve them and completes our long-range master plan for Milpitas with what will be the city's only private high school. Pending city approvals, our plan is to start construction this September and open for the twenty five, twenty six academic school year. We thank the many parents who have sent letters of support to the commission. They represent the more than six hundred Milpitas families who we serve today or who are currently on our waiting lists. Stratford is excited to be making an investment of more than forty million dollars in the adaptive reuse of a building that has been vacant for many years and helping to jumpstart the next phase of development in the newly adopted metro specific plan area. We are especially pleased to be offering an unprecedented one million dollars community benefit package as part of the development agreement to support important citywide initiatives in these difficult budget times. Stratford respectfully asks the commission to recommend the project as proposed by staff for approval by the city council later this summer. And I am joined this evening by our land use consultant, Sean Morley, and our project architect, Jeremy Theodore, who led the design and application process. And we are here and more than happy to answer your questions. I might offer to begin by answering two of the questions that came up that we didn't quite specifically respond if I could do so first, and then we could certainly open to more questions. Regarding the school timings, so our oldest students, so our middle school students, and then as we begin, the ninth grade and the rest of high school, they will arrive earliest in the morning. So their arrival time will actually begin at seven thirty. They'll be completely in their building before we begin the elementary arrival at the adjacent school. And then it is a similar pattern with the school departure times where the oldest students depart earlier, and then we proceed with elementary departure. So I think that addresses the more specific question that you had. And then there was a question related to security guard. So one thing I did want to clarify, the general school operation day is seven A M. to six P M. Monday through Friday. There are occasions where we may have an evening event. And I believe you referenced the potential for as late as ten P M. That would be once in a great while if we have a specific, you know, a graduation event or some other kind of, you know, parent event or student event. But in general, through the majority of the year, our daily operations are seven A M. to six P M. Our security guard is onsite typically seven thirty in the morning till five P M. And we do request security guard presence if we believe that there is impact at our late evening events, the ones that could potentially last until nine or ten P M. We will often bring the guards back for support of those events as well.
How many security do you have during?
Two total, one at each location.
I have a question. You, for five hundred students and you have total of sixteen classrooms, you said five hundred students, right? Is this enough classroom for private students?
Would you like, I think I'll ask Jeremy Theodore, our architect, to address that question. Yeah, you want to talk about the floor plan? Yeah.
It's a total of twenty seven classrooms.
So the computer science is another.
Counted as twenty seven, yes.
So how many students per classroom?
It's probably back to Kelly, but it's about a ratio of.
Yeah, we can have, depending on the square footage of the classroom, we could have upwards of twenty four to twenty five students in a classroom, unless the physical space in the classroom is smaller, such as electives or specialty classes, those may be much smaller. But in general, we could go up to twenty four or twenty five.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for them? Commissioner Kong, and then Commissioner Gupta.
So I do have several questions for the applicant. Maybe.
I'll start it if I can field them, and if not, we'll bring one of the other folks up.
All right. So this is the second high school, right, in the Bay Area for Stratford?
That is correct. Stratford opened a middle school and upper school in San Jose at the former Blackford High School a year ago, and it is currently ramping up fuller operations. It's a much different campus, much larger, much larger in volume.
Yeah, and that's what I was hoping to find out. What is the capacity or the targeted maximum capacity of the Blackford campus compared to the Milpitas campus?
Well, first of all, they're totally different campuses. That was a former public high school. And so designed as such, it's many acres, it's very large. The enrollment there is allowed is up to fifteen hundred. The site is actually would support two thousand. This is a very small urban campus meant and designed in a very different way to support a much smaller student population.
And based on your projection, I mean, how, what is the matriculation that you expect going from the elementary to this new college prep in Milpitas versus the one in the main, the larger campus in San Jose?
We do have some students from Milpitas and some of our other middle schools who are going to the Blackford campus. It's a long drive. And we would much prefer to meet the demand for the community from Milpitas here in Milpitas. We have a number of middle school students at the school next door, and we fully expect that over time, all, if not all, most of those students will end up at the high school. Parents get to make that choice as they matriculate to an upper school, both middle school and a high school. But there's so much demand from our parent community that was one of the reasons we're pursuing, we're pursuing the site as part of the master plan. It works really well next door to the existing campus, although they do operate as completely separate campuses. And appropriately so, one's at a lower school, one's at an upper school.
And then there's one thing that was mentioned earlier about stagger, I guess, staggering the start time. And it's kind of maybe a bit counterintuitive to me that the oldest students are starting earlier when there is a state law that actually wants the older students to start later. How does that conform with the state law?
Yeah, it's a good question. I'll leave that one probably to Kelly, or do you want me to field it? Yeah, I want to let you handle it. Kelly's responsible for operations at all Stratford schools, so he's really the best authority on that. And then I'll probably come back to answer some of the other questions.
Thank you. We, excuse me, we have not addressed specifically the, regarding the state law that you brought up. We typically have done this for our older students because of the numerous after-school leadership activities, sports activities in which they participate. So having them finish their school day, let's say, three o'clock, three fifteen, allows them to then prepare themselves for the breadth of leadership activities and sports activities that our schools offer. So in order to have that appropriate time, we have them arrive earlier before the elementary students arrive.
Okay, all right. And then I have one more, I guess, question regarding the school. I mean, in terms of how do you differentiate this school, this small little urban campus from the other offerings that we do have in the city right now? I mean, we do have a really good public school system, and we have new innovation campuses up. How do you differentiate so that, you know, we can continue to be a cohesive city to add by, you know, you're not taking students from one another?
Sure, thank you for that question. I think as Sean mentioned as well, really, the idea behind this small urban, you know, upper school, high school is really to provide a natural pathway for our own Stratford school families who want to be with us through high school and want to continue to develop, you know, their education, their skills, their passions in our Stratford program, to have the opportunity to do that in a more local place. Currently, as Sean mentioned to you, our Milpitas middle school graduates by and large have to commute quite a long ways to get to the San Jose location to continue their high school education. So that is really the focus here is meeting the demands of our own parents who want to continue with Stratford and want to stay with us in our own high school program and providing a location that is certainly more convenient for them. What I would say is our high school is really designed to be a very strong continuation of what we do in our preschool, our elementary and our middle school. So it would naturally include, you know, the honors and AP coursework in all of the core subject areas. It offers the continuation of our world language programs in Spanish and in Mandarin. It offers deep exploration and pathways for our students to explore healthcare opportunities, business and entrepreneurship opportunities, and computer science pathways as well. Ultimately in mind is that we want them to be able to grow and develop to meet their full potential. And ultimately, their goal is to place into and be accepted to the colleges and universities to which they want to go. And our goal is to make sure that we help them to get there.
All right, thank you. I do have one more question. I'm not sure if this can be answered by you or by Mr. Avery. Is there going to be an economic impact in terms of property tax increase as this site gets redeveloped?
That is an Avery question.
So generally speaking, the county assessor's office will be the department with the state that will assess whether and what degree the improvements of the site will increase the property value and property tax and the tax rule that the city then receives. I would, I would say with some confidence that, yes, the improvements to the site would likely increase the property tax rule. The sale of the property from its previous owner to its new ownership would then change the property tax rule and have the ability to change the percentage. I can't speak to what it would inevitably be at the end of the day. That's the responsibility of the assessor to do so. But yes, there is a likelihood that it would increase.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I do want to ask that question about parking again. So since all of the allocated parking will be used by the staff and the teachers, I don't think carpool is a good solution for teachers among themselves to that extent.
Yeah.
So there may be no parking left for the students, and that still needs to be addressed.
Yeah. And so let's, Avery spoke about the regulatory side of it and the change that's occurred within the specific plan area, and there is a hard maximum. Then there's the practical side of it. What do we need to operate efficiently for our own operations, and so it's to be good neighbors and like? We are going to be able to satisfy, and we're very comfortable, just given the operation that we have south with existing parking to meet all of our needs for faculty, staff that is visiting the site, occasional visitors, as well as, you know, parents who need to stop in during the day, although that's very minimal. We, one of the things that Avery, I think, didn't draw out enough, but is important to recognize, and this goes back to the specific plan. We actually have a requirement, a transportation demand management plan. That's not a term you hear a lot yet, but I guarantee you in the next four years, you're going to start hearing it on a lot of projects. What does that require? We have to actually adopt a plan and implement it, which is required as a condition of approval. And we have to reduce the number of trips coming to the site, both for staff and for families. Now, that'll be done through a number of techniques. We have one in San. We have one in San Jose. It includes mandatory carpooling. In that instance, there's no mass transit. The location of this site so close to BART, we fully expect that, I wouldn't expect the middle school students, but the juniors and seniors who might otherwise drive, they're going to be taking BART. We have a very large group of people. And we only expect about forty percent of the chairs at this school to be filled by Milpitas residents, consistent with what we see at our other campus, um, other campuses. We're happy to talk about some of that data if you'd like. And so over time, too, I think we're going to see less of a demand for marking. It's clearly the city's goal. As a practical matter, we already know that there's going to be interest from our community in doing that. So how else do we solve for it? We've had informal arrangements in the early years, when frankly, more of our people were driving, uh, with surrounding property owners, um, to share parking. One of the other things that the specific plan calls for is shared parking arrangements. Now, we don't require it for this project, except within our two sites, and we are balancing fairly well. Um, but we're very comfortable that notwithstanding the regulatory limitations that those parking numbers actually mean are, we do not expect our junior students, for sure, but even our senior students, even if space is available, very few will likely drive. We have a very suburban campus in San Jose. We're just starting to get to some of the upper school grades there, but we do not expect a high demand for students to drive. Uh, it's just generally not consistent with what we see with our community and demographic. It's a bit of a learning curve, obviously. Um, but the one thing we do know is that we've got to park our teachers first. Um, and if there's only space available, then we'll turn to students. Over time, we certainly hope those numbers will reduce because of the proximity to BART. And conceivably even shuttles for kids. Um, I'm not sure this campus will necessarily necessitate that. Um, we certainly would leave ourselves open to the ability to do it. Um, you know, if there is something that makes sense for that purpose. And we expect that our transportation program will evolve over time to meet the needs of the community and the neighborhood. And by the way, we have, we didn't send a notice out to our own letter of introduction, uh, earlier this year to the twenty six hundred people on the mailing list that we did all and offering to meet individually with folks. We'd only got one response, uh, was from our neighbor across the street, the hotels, uh, who we'd already had some dialogue, dialogue with. We've had a very good discussions with them. Um, they seemed very comfortable with the project, um, and looking forward to having us as an expanded neighbor. Any other questions for us at this point?
Thank you, Commissioner Gupta. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Good. I might just ask if there's any public comment, if we might have an opportunity to just follow up at the end, if there is any, uh, community comment on the project, it'd be appreciated.
So at this time, I'm gonna have the public comment. Liz, thank you so much.
I have one speaker card and it's from the Milpitas Unified School District.
Uh, how many do we have, please?
Should I start? Now see the timer. Okay. All right. Hi, I'm Superintendent Cheryl Jordan of Milpitas Unified School District, and I have with me our board president, Menno, trustee, Rob Jung, and our CBO, Dorothy Riconose. And I want to thank you commissioners and staff for the time that you're giving us to assure that you have a full picture of education in Milpitas. And, uh, remember the investment that our residents make in our public education system, as Commissioner Kong pointed out, which is an exceptional district. And we do have three high schools already. We have the Middle College High School. We have Milpitas High School, and we have Calaveras Hills High School. And between those three schools, including our new Milpitas High School Extension at the MUSD Innovation Campus, we have so many different pathways because in addition to our first strategic goal of building a culture of we, our third strategic goal is to build pathways for all of our learners to career so that they can be the future leaders and creators of what we call home here in Milpitas and Silicon Valley. And just as I see crossroads of Silicon Valley, that's something that rings very true for us and Milpitas Unified, because we assure that all of our learners have multiple experiences, including a world-class robotics team, a nationally recognized speech and debate team, a state championship athletics program, as well as state champions on science Olympiads, and so many other opportunities for our learners outside of school as well as in the classroom. And we are working with our institutes of higher ed so that our students now have access to dual enrollment, which means that they can graduate from our system with both a high school diploma as well as up to two years or an associate's degree in community college. In addition to that, we are working with our partners in business, in governance, and in community to assure that our students have applied learning opportunities so that they can participate in business as interns and apprenticeships. So there's so much to offer our students here in Milpitas. And also to remember that the residents of our community have invested, as was mentioned, in the MUSD Innovation Campus, which we want to see successful. And I will say too, that on average, we receive about forty to fifty students each year who come back to us for high school after being in a private school. And each of those students is funding of twelve thousand dollars. So that amounts to about three million dollars that we would lose. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else, please?
Yes, Chair, we have Joe Maraspinie.
Please state your name, thank you.
Yeah, hi, my name is, uh, Joe Maraspinie. I'm with the, uh, NorCal Carpenters Union. And, um, I'm here to highlight the, um, an exciting opportunity that, uh, promises enhance our educational infrastructure, but also strengthens our community and fabric. The Stratford, uh, Preparatory School is embarking on a transformative project. Uh, the construction of this school, um, is a state of the art and also a state of the art gymnasium building spanning seven thousand eight hundred eighty-three square feet and standing thirty-five, uh, feet tall. This endeavor is more than, uh, just a brick and mortar. It's about investing in our future and, uh, nurturing the potential of our youth. Uh, this project is, uh, potential to put hardworking men and women to work that, uh, live in the community, um, by hiring responsible, uh, contractor, uh, that does the right thing and pay for healthcare and hiring from an accredited apprenticeship program. By hiring a responsible contractor, this ensures men and women, uh, would not be exploited by low wages and, uh, no health, no healthcare. Uh, it means, uh, work for individuals with valuable skills, empowering them to build careers right here at home in Milpitas. Um, this school and gymnasium, uh, will serve as a place where students can thrive academically, athletically, and socially. It'll be a venue for sports events, culture gatherings, and community activities, fostering connections and a sense of pride among residents. Uh, by investing in our educational facilities, uh, we invest in the future, uh, leaders, athletes, and innovators, uh, who will shape our community tomorrow. Uh, together, we are laying our foundation for success, growth, and unity. Let's embrace this opportunity, harness our collective strength, and build a school and gymnasium that not only stands tall in, uh, the structure, but stands as a testament to our shared community and commitment, uh, to excellence. I urge this body to ensure that a responsible contractor is selected. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If there are any other questions, commissioners, uh, for the applicant? Did you have anything? Would you want to give us some comments?
Yeah, I thought I might just respond to the two public comments. Um, first, Stratford will be using dome construction, um, for this, this project. A dome is actually a responsible contractor and is a signatory with the contractor. So I think they'll be very happy. Um, and I'm happy to have a chat with you all, uh, after the meeting. If you'd like to, I can connect you with them directly. But, um, we, uh, view our position in the community as, uh, responsible partners. Um, and that includes with a lot of groups. Um, you know, I appreciate very much our friends from, uh, the school district, um, being here this evening. Um, Stratford and the district, uh, share a common mission to educate Milpitas's children. And, uh, we've had a very good partnership and complement each other very well. Ours on the, uh, private school path, and there's obviously on the public side. Many of our parents, about six hundred community members, you know, obviously support the public schools as well. Um, we, um, take very seriously the question, which I think I heard the superintendent sort of getting out, which was uh, about what our enrollment issues are and how they may affect the school. Um, we, um, are obviously, um, take the question very seriously, and we've looked very hard at this and had some dialogue with the superintendent. And I'd like to share a little bit of that information with you just for transparency and so we can all understand sort of the ground we're walking on. I mean, the first and very simple answer is we just don't have an enrollment impact on the public school system, and we don't expect and know that that won't happen for the high school. Explain a little, little bit about that. Um, as Kelly said, our students generally start with us and they, um, want to continue to matriculate through high school, and we're trying to create that opportunity. But the data, it's not just something we're saying, the data actually supports that. Um, the superintendent asked us to look at this question last year related to one of our other schools. And as soon as we got a full year's data, we produced it and shared it with her. And it was interesting for us, too. It was actually different than what I expected. It was much lower. Uh, we have, in the last school year, we had eleven hundred and nine students in Milpitas at the three campuses. Of those, about four hundred and fifty or forty-one percent were Milpitas residents who could go to, uh, technically, uh, Milpitas Union School District campus. However, when we studied that data, there were twenty seven students in question. Sixteen came from the school and we sent eleven back for a net of, um, only about seventeen students. Now, what does this mean from a percentage standpoint? It's about one and a half percent of our total enrollment. For the district, it's zero point one six percent. It is a very, very small number. We would fully expect those demographic trends to continue, uh, for the high school, um, given that our students are going to be continuing. Um, but the larger, and I'm, we've got some slides that I've shared previously with the school district. I'm happy to bring those up and walk through with you the particular tables, if that's helpful, um, if we need to have a further conversation about it. However, we take it very seriously. We take our partnership very seriously, um, with the school district. Uh, we plan to continue to be very good partners, um, and, you know, look forward to working with them here. But generally speaking, um, you know, we're in very separate spheres within the larger educational world. Um, and we, uh, fully expect that our students and to the extent we have other capacity at our campus, and we fully expect that'll be the case. Students will be coming from elsewhere, potentially other Stratford schools that aren't in Milpitas, or in addition, from other private school communities. So, um, we certainly, you know, welcome students coming from the public schools. And likewise, for students who want to matriculate in the other direction, whether that be middle school or high school, strongly encourage anybody to do that because Milpitas public schools are wonderful. And in fact, the last comment I'll make is this isn't just our data. The school's demographer, who looked at this question very carefully at the school district's, um, behest last year, um, you know, declared that really the enrollment issues related to the district, um, that may have occurred or were primarily driven by the pandemic and just an aging population that isn't generating students. Um, and, you know, when asked the question directly from one of the board members, shared that our school was, did not have an impact on their enrollment. And so, you know, I think the, we, we certainly, you know, understand the enrollment issues and are concerned about it like they are, but we are not the ones driving that, that challenge. Anyway, with that, I'll leave it. If people have follow-up questions, please let me know. But otherwise, we very much appreciate the time. We hope you will act tonight to approve the project, consistent with the staff's recommendation. Um, and, uh, we'll look forward, if you have other questions for us, to answering.
Thank you, Sean. And, uh, Commissioner Kong?
Uh, I do have a question, uh, to follow up on what you mentioned.
Sure.
Um, so I think it goes back to timing, right? You're still ramping up your Blackford campus. It's new.
It is.
And now you're trying to build a new, you know, high school?
Yes.
And you're trying to start next year?
Yeah.
Um, and Milpitas School District, like as Superintendent Jordan just mentioned, we have two newer high schools that were just, uh, you know, opening up one that's coming in this next school year, this coming twenty twenty-four school year. And there's another one that, you know, the middle college high school that opened up two years ago, I would say. So the timing of it, do you, when you say that there is no impact on enrollment, it's kind of hard to believe when so many are ramping up at the same time.
Yeah, and look, Ed, when we talk about, look, just, let's look at some broad public and private data countywide, and this is information readily available to everyone. About eighteen percent of all students who are of age between kindergarten and twelfth grade in Santa Clara County go to private schools. There are sixty-three private schools in Santa Clara County. As a percentage, generally speaking, Milpitas has about the same number. It doesn't have a high school. Um, on the private side, you've mentioned some public schools. Our other high school, um, high schools, in some respects, are local. They, they gravitate from a slightly larger level. We fully expect, and while we certainly allow people to enroll from further distances, we really don't love having our children get in cars or in from anywhere else and drive long distances to go to their campus. We'd much rather have them be local. And so we fully expect, and the school in San Jose was designed to support a community on the west, a larger community on the west side of the valley. That's different than the northeast quadrant and Milpitas, North San Jose, Fremont is the most engaged area and community that Stratford has. And so we want people to be able to attend locally. Now, with respect to the other public schools, certainly, there's new opportunities and all of those are wonderful. We complement each other. We don't compete. Um, the data is very clear about that from where our students are coming from. They're starting in a private school community and they want to stay in a private school community. Um, and so we're trying to service that group of students, um, for all the reasons that Kelly said. And we don't see that trending, you know, against the district. And I think the district's own demographic information supports that conclusion. We really focused very hard on the numbers, uh, because we took the request that was made from us by the district on this question very, very seriously. And we wanted to know for ourselves, because it wasn't a stat that we just keep regularly. So we had to go back and do a fairly comprehensive calculation. And the data just isn't, it's, I think I said seventeen, it's actually a net, after the high school, you project that out, it may be a seven additional students. Um, that's such a small percentage, um, that it's hard to, it's within the range of, it's a very small number. Um, and I would fully expect that we'll continue to continue to see that trend. Just as an example, we have about between fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade today in Milpitas, about a hundred and eighty students. And that's about forty percent of the five hundred, and that's about the range that we expect would be served, at least from Milpitas residents today at this campus.
Would you be comfortable if I, you know, request a condition whereby your programming is tailored in a way that it doesn't compete with our public schools and, you know, I just want to make sure there's differentiation, right? And that if we approve this project, it goes on to add benefit to the community without taking away benefits that is existing in our public schools.
And I think that's happening today as it exists. I'm not sure how we would draft a condition like that. If you want to encourage the council to look at that question, we can certainly look at it. However, um, you know, we're complementing each other today. We're good partners. The data, and if you want, we'll bring up the tables. You can look at it yourself. We do not have students that are coming from Milpitas Unified School District. It's a very, very, very small number. It's less than a percentage and a half of our students. And so we are not impacting them. And, um, you know, certainly, um, if that's something you want to explore, I would encourage you to suggest it as a recommendation. We're not going to adjust anything like that on the fly. Um, but I'm not sure candidly how we would do it because it runs. because it runs to operations. And it's, it is an esoteric question, subjective question at some level. And I'm not sure how we would objectively quantify it. All I can do is talk about the data that we have now, and that shows unequivocally that we are not impacting the school. And in fact, our parents are contributing to the larger community economic benefit as well without utilizing the stated activities.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
Anything else, commissioners?
I'd like to make a comment. Is that okay to ask, make a comment? Because I believe in free competition, free enterprise. So I think there's nothing wrong with having competition between private schools and public schools because parents will go to private school only if they see the value. See the value, they're paying additional fee of whatever 25, $30,000. And some of the private school, they pay even twice than that. So the point is, what's wrong with competition? Let the, let the competition happen. And like Stanford is competing with Berkeley, right? One is public, one is private. And both are successful. So.
I, we don't look at it as competition, but I appreciate your comment. We really do look at it as complementary way to achieve our shared mission, which is to educate Milpitas children. And people want options. And, you know, families that want to make a choice about the private school system can certainly do that. I just would leave you with the fact that the, although Stratford has had some, you know, growth in Milpitas, it, the, it's very consistent, and you're essentially on par with the rest of the county. And in terms of number of private schools, number of seats, those kinds of things. And so I just don't think we're, we like to think of ourselves as complementary partners. But I appreciate your comment.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Sean. Thank you for that. Maybe at this time, I'd like to maybe motion to close the public comments. Can I have a motion, and then we can discuss?
I can make the motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Kong.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Gupta. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Galang?
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby?
Aye.
And Chair Albana?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any sharing among ourselves? To me, I really feel that our city would have a good impact with regards to, I heard that about 40% of our residents are attending the Stratford schools. And from one school to the other, with there are three, it will, you know, the impact thereof, less, longer travel, traffic and everything is, is good. That's, you know, that's how I look at it.
I think it's a great value to the city. I mean, it's actually, it's a great news that there is a private school which going up to the 12th grade level. I think it adds value to the city. I think it's fantastic that's happening.
Correct. And from the different levels, they can just transition from close proximity. Right?
Yeah.
Any other comments among ourselves?
I do feel like having option is good for the city. But I do want to make sure that we are mindful that we have a lot of new high schools that just got added to our city already. So if the applicant has mentioned, maybe we can include a recommendation to city council to consider the data that, you know, he can provide to us to share and make sure that we are confident that these are complimentary and there are going to be synergy between Stratford family and the Milpitas Unified School District such that the education level will be elevated for everyone and not come at the detriment of our public schools.
Thank you. So Tony, maybe we could, we could just add that?
So if there was recommendations of specific things that you think the city council should look into and consider when they evaluate, whatever recommendation you move on, you could add that. If you had recommendations for conditions of approval or other kinds of things, you could make a recommendation for what the content of that condition would be to be approved or informed by the city attorney and to be considered for addition by the city council. That would allow staff and the applicants to be able to dialogue about what potential conditions could be. So it depends on what, I would be happy to help craft a recommendation for what a motion could look like. I need a little bit more information about which direction you're thinking of going.
Thank you, Tony.
It's probably not a condition, but a request for, as the applicant has mentioned, he can bring forward the data to share with city council when, if this project moves on to city council for decision-making, to include the consideration of that data as far as how this new private school will benefit the city without any detriment to our public schools.
So it's certainly possible for any of the applicants, even without any language in this recommendation, to submit information, studies, documents, other kinds of things, comments that they wish to be made part of the record. So those things could be submitted whenever this item comes before the state council, even without any kind of a element of the motion here. You can also have recommendation language that goes with whatever recommendation you convey, resolution pass. City council, please consider with particularity the studies based upon effects on enrollment in the public school.
Is that fine? We'll just add that then?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe I'd like to make a motion to approve this with the following comment, right? So I'd like to move to adopt resolution number 24-021, recommending that the city council approve SD 23-0012 with EA 24-001 and DA 24-001 and resolution number 24-023, recommending that the city council approve UP 23-008 based on the above findings and subject to the conditions of approval attached here through end with asking the council to consider any information that would be shared. Tony, can you continue?
Aye. Recommendation, the city council, consider any information on impacts of this project to enrollment in the public school system, particularly those submitted by the applicant or, or other public commenters.
Is that fine? Yes, fine, thank you. So do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Kong, for the second.
Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Galang?
Yes.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Chair Albana?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for our next item. We're done. Our next item would be new businesses, since there's no items. Let me read the declaration. Any person agreed by any final decision of any board, commission, or department head of the city of Milpitas may appeal the decision to the city council by filing written notice of the appeal with a city clerk within 12 calendar days of the date of said decision and paying the required fees. This time, limits shall be strictly enforced. Our next would be, we had a long, beautiful, meaningful meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Commissioner Galang and Commissioner Gupta, second. Roll call.
Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Galang?
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Chair Albana?
Aye.
Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.